Clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At my feet. Okay. You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Land's here. Okay. We have two presentations tonight. I see Kyle here. Kyle has an Eagle project. He is working on the Laurelwood Trail. We needed some work and was a big undertaking. And he's going to give us an update of how that project is going. So there you go. You're up, Kyle.
All right. Do you mind if I present slides? Just share my screen.
Do we have him set to share?
I can make him a co-host.
Yeah, okay. Then you can put up his.
Okay, you should be able to do that now.
All right, thank you. All right, can everyone see that?
There it is. Yes.
I can see it.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for your time to present my finished Eagle project tonight. My name is Kyle Morris. I'm currently a life scout in Troop 150 Bernardsville and a freshman at Bernards High School. My Eagle project was to finish and enhance the Borough Trail. I started my project in June of 2020, and I've just finished this week. It consists of three work sessions on the trail and many hours of planning. There were six main components of the trail. This is the start of the trail and part of the switchbacks. The first was to clean the fallen trees across the path. The next one was to cut a two feet wide and eight feet tall as recommended by the National Park Service. Number three was to improve the slopes by creating two switchbacks, one on the roundtop side and one on the Laurelwood side. Number four was to build an elevated walkway over the muddy area on the roundtop side of the trail. Number five was to plant shrubs and trees. And number six was other trail improvements, having adding like trail braziers, putting in benches, and making maps. And the map is on your left. And ongoing maintenance is required for the trail, so I'll be sending an email later with all the details. And here are some pictures of the finished product. So, or whoops, this is a picture of us working on the trail some before. On your right, that is the roundtop switchbacks that have been finished. On your right is also the raised walkway that I built and after, or before is right there. That's also another picture of the roundtop switchbacks, and that was the before. And to finish off today, I would like to thank the Borough Council and the Open Space Committee for their support. I'd also like to thank Home Depot for donating supplies and Tarzan Tree Company for donating their time and service. The Boy Scouts have also given their time to help work on the trail and give their continued support to all the projects they contribute to. Mother Kathleen Williams, my grandfather Jim Williams, and my brother have also given their time to help me on this project and even contributed money to get all the necessary supplies. And finally, I would like to thank Mr. Burnbound for all his time, guidance, and donations on this project. He has been a great help, and I appreciate everything he has done for my Eagle project. Are there any questions about the project in general?
That's a beautiful job, Kyle. That's a lot of work. Thank you so much. I mean, it really, it just adds so much to the town and our open space, and I think we're the one that should be thanking you.
Thank you.
Really, it was a great project. Well done.
If you want to see extra photos and videos, I can send you guys a Google site. It has all the working on progress, all the finished progress, and a video of the full walkthrough of the trail.
Oh, that would be great. Sure. We can even put it up on our website if you have a little video so that people in town will know what the path looks like and hopefully go and use it.
Do we know what the total, just the total length of the path is?
It's about a half mile. Exactly, it's point four or five-five miles.
Very good.
Yeah. And it's beautiful in there, too. Once you get into about the middle of it, it's really very pretty. So it's a nice trail, too.
Yeah.
In the afternoon and walk on.
Thank you very much. It's great.
Thank you, Kyle.
Okay, our next presentation is from Topology because tonight we will be introducing the ordinance for the redevelopment plan for Quimby Lane. So I saw Phil and Chris. I know they're here from Topology, so I will let you guys take over.
Yes, we are here. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council, members of public, for letting us join you tonight. I speak for Phil, I believe, to say that I'm very excited to be here presenting this. My name's Chris Colley. I work with Topology. I've been here a few times before. And I'm going to spend probably about 15 minutes walking you through the Quimby Lane redevelopment plan, which, as the mayor said, is potentially being introduced this evening. This has been a lot of hard work coming, and as I said, we're happy to be here this evening. So I'm going to start by walking you through a little bit of background, tell you a little bit about the area itself, walk you through what is included in the redevelopment plan, and then leave you with a consideration of some next steps. And I assume everybody can see my screen?
I can see it.
Yes, okay. Great. All right, so we always like to start these presentations with a little bit of history, and this one, this one has quite a bit more than these projects often do. And, you know, from our perspective, like, this project really began almost four years ago with the inclusion of a recommendation in the master plan reexamination, the affirmation of a recommendation to study the Quimby Lane area for the purpose of identifying opportunities for improvement and opportunities for redevelopment, and really sort of situating it as a potential core, central gathering area for the downtown. And stemming from that initial act by the Borough has come a series of actions which lead us here this evening to the redevelopment plan. So I'm not going to walk through each one of these individually, but I will say that along the way, what has gone into this redevelopment plan has been an extensive amount of public engagement through a really impressively conducted survey back in early 2018 by the Downtown Revitalization Committee, engagement with the private development community through an RFP process, which happened later on in 2018, all of the necessary regulatory steps to make the area eligible for a redevelopment plan in late 2019. And then finally, a really long, and not long, but fruitful and productive process producing a redevelopment plan with the Downtown Redevelopment Committee over the last five or six months. The Downtown Redevelopment Committee, for any folks on the line who don't know, comprises a mixture of elected officials, council members, planning board members, business owners, members of the public. And we, Topology, have been meeting with the DRC, an acronym I'll use throughout the presentation, over the last, as I said, six months or so to prepare this redevelopment plan we'll be discussing tonight. So that's where, how we got here. Moving forward, should this be introduced tonight, the next step would be a consistency review at the Planning Board at one of their upcoming meetings to determine its relevance with the master plan, and then ultimately a potential second reading and adoption in early October. So I just want to say this in the beginning. I know we recently did a redevelopment plan in Bernardsville, so I think folks are starting to get familiar with the contents of a redevelopment plan, but I think it's important for us all to just be aligned in terms of like what the plan is and what it isn't. So the redevelopment plan that you're going to see tonight, it is a detailed zoning ordinance, has very specific design standards, it mandates public improvements, but it is not a site plan. You're not going to see a drawing of where buildings are going to go. You're not going to see building elevations. It's not those things. It's very much sort of a framework for development that, in subsequent phases, developers will work through and propose specific projects. So we're establishing the parameters, the lines that will be colored in through subsequent projects. So I'll talk a little bit the overview. I'll go through this quickly since I think you're all pretty familiar with it. The property is bounded by Clermont Road in the west, Mill Street in the north, Alcott Square in the east, and Mine Brook Road in the south. Throughout our presentation, you're going to hear me really refer to the sites in two key sections. Everything west of Quimby, which is block 71, and everything east of Quimby, which is block 70. But combined, they comprise about, or comprise 25 parcels, about five or so acres, and a lot of owners, 21 owners. And you'll note that I outlined and read there the post office properties. Those are borough-controlled properties, and as we get into the content, you'll see play a crucial role in the implementation and the development of the redevelopment plan. So one of the reasons why the distinction between west of Quimby and east of Quimby is so important, and really like maybe the most defining physical characteristic of the site, is the presence of a floodway area, which is the result of the Mine Brook, which runs generally through the site from north to south. And the floodway really impacts the development capacity of the area west of Quimby and has really played a huge role in terms of the recommendations that we've made in this plan and how we see it being implemented. You'll also note on this slide two other lines, a section line A running from west to east, and then a section line B running from east to west. And what those are going to show you, and you know it because you've been out there, is that the site has unique topography, which on one hand is a challenge and on the other hand is a real asset. But generally, the site moving from north to south, slopes downward, Mill Street being at a higher elevation from Mine Brook Road, and from east to west or west to east sort of creates a bowl that you can see here. And that topography is important for you to know about, but it's also important because it's going to affect the recommendations. Quick note on zoning, existing zoning, you know, redevelopment plans should consider existing zoning, although, you know, one of the points is to create a tailored zoning code for the area. Importantly, this area is included, or is inclusive of your affordable housing overlay zone here in red. What we found in our research is that a lot of that area, or really almost all that area, is in the regulatory floodway. So one of the big moves that we make in the redevelopment plan is shifting a lot of the anticipated density in that area, west of Quimby, east to more developable parcels. I'll also note, since you're either hearing about it tonight or will be soon, in the pending downtown zoning, should, were these areas not included in a redevelopment plan, they would be in the downtown core and the Clermont, downtown Clermont zones. So on a final note in terms of background, every project, every good redevelopment project, I should say, has a collection of public benefits that should come with it. And sometimes those public benefits are sort of cosmetic and ancillary to the actual project. And sometimes they're incredibly detailed and incredibly important to the success of the redevelopment. And what we have here is, we're lucky to have, is the latter scenario. So I just pulled this language out of the request for proposals that was put out in 2018. It was really driven by responses from members of the public in the Downtown Revitalization Survey that was conducted a couple of years ago. And this RFP really laid out the anticipated public benefits, and this was sort of like the raw material for the redevelopment plan in terms of like, what are the crucial items besides development that we need to implement in order for this project to be a success? So again, I won't hit each of these individually, but I will just flag some big ones. Number three, the third bullet point, which is new restaurants and other uses that would create nightlife and experiential retail. Number four, crucial, a public park to enhance the amenity of the Mine Brook. And number five, public plazas to create gathering spaces for residents and visitors and to become a hub. So all of those, all of these things function in the plan, fed into the plan, but those three really are crucial and central to it. So on that note, I'll move into the actual redevelopment plan itself. You know, as I have sort of been building too, like, these plans need to combine a wide range of things, like they need to hit on public benefits, they need to include detailed regulations for what can be built, they need to have an implementation structure, they need to consider site limitations. I think this plan, more so than most, like, really requires the marriage of those four conditions. And in analyzing the site and trying to draft a plan to meet the borough's needs and to get you where you want it to be, we really faced, I think, two key challenges. So the first one was about creating a plan that set forth a desirable development program, and these I will read, and also mandated the anticipated public benefits, made it necessary that the borough was provided with the benefits that it wanted when it went into the project, but also still accounted for a lot of the variability on-site that would result from the site limitations, which I mentioned about the topography and the floodplain, and also the incredible diverse ownership. So balancing those two things, balancing the needs versus the sort of uncertainty, was a key challenge in developing this. And then secondly, but sort of related, you know, we believe and we say it in the plan that this project will be most successful if implemented by a single developer. But that's not guaranteed. And, you know, we don't know who in the development community is going to come forward and what they're going to, how they're going to propose to move the project forward. So we wanted to make sure that our plan allowed for multiple redevelopers to advance it, but that if we ended up in that situation where we had multiple redevelopers, there wasn't a potential outcome where the first decisions and implementation prevented the end result that we all wanted, which is the creation of those public benefits. So dealing with that phasing question and how we could ensure that we don't sort of get left with the scraps at the end, that the borough doesn't get left with the scraps at the end, was crucial to the development of the document. So at first, we sort of tried to deal with those questions by simply breaking the site down into different sub-areas, and I'll talk more about these in a moment. But we found that even in doing that, there was still a lot of variability that was in the plan, and it was difficult to sort of get to an end result that captured the public benefits needed. So the tool that we developed and included in the redevelopment plan, and is really sort of the, I think, like, the core implementation mechanism that you should, that you should take away from this presentation this evening, is what we're calling the conceptual development plan. And basically, when I said in the beginning, you know, a redevelopment plan is not a series of building footprints and building elevations and detailed engineering and really the sort of nuts and bolts of the redevelopment project, that's not the plan. That's what the conceptual development plan is. And what we've put in the redevelopment plan is that any, is that the first designation that will be undertaken by the council will be the designation of a redeveloper who is obligated to create this conceptual development plan. And in that conceptual development plan, there will be things like building locations, uses, heights, programs, all of that, but also, and importantly, a strategy for implementing and really describing the details of all of the public benefits that we need to have come out of this project. So the plaza, the park, concealed parking, connection feasibility studies, Boilin Terrace, all of those things to be implemented, or rather, to be addressed in what we're calling this CDP or this conceptual development plan. So that's kind of like a big ask and kind of onerous, and what we didn't want to do was come out of this with a plan that just placed an onerous obligation that may be difficult to meet on a redeveloper. So what we do in the redevelopment plan is we tie that creation of the conceptual development plan to the development of SubArea 1. And SubArea 1, which if you read the document, is littered throughout, is the area that comprises the post office and the post office parking lot. So borough-controlled land sits outside of the floodway and is relative to a lot of the rest of the site, highly developable. So we say in the plan that whoever the borough designates to be the redeveloper of SubArea 1 is obligated to create that conceptual development plan, and with it, sort of lay out the details of the overall redevelopment of the district, specifically relating to the public improvements. So I'm not going to walk through each of the public improvements and how they're dealt with in the redevelopment plan, but I will spend a little bit of time just talking about the plaza, which we refer to in the document as Quimby Plaza, as a case study for showing like how this conceptual development plan will translate redevelopment plan standards to an implementable project at the end of the day. So we include in the redevelopment plan specific standards for Quimby Plaza. That 6,000 square feet of it is going to be located on the borough's controlled property, that each adjacent property owner has an obligation in the course of redevelopment to dedicate property to the plaza, that there will be a specified number, minimum number of entrances, and that there will be certain design standards for the plaza and for the entry pathways. But what we don't do in the redevelopment plan is specifically state where exactly that plaza will be. And it's worth noting that the reason we don't do that is because of all of the sort of difficulties of the site associated with topography, diverse ownership, all of the things that will need to sort of be colored in in this next phase. So just for the sake of illustration, you know, this is roughly 6,000 square feet of plaza space on the east side of the property. You can see these sort of conceptual points that the plaza would be entered from Alcott, Mill, Quimby, and you can see like how that plaza, through development of adjacent properties, would reach the 10,000 square feet threshold, which we've put in the redevelopment plan as the minimal plaza. So similarly, each of the other public benefits mandated through the plan would be implemented, or not implemented, but developed in more detail through the creation of this conceptual development plan to be submitted and approved from a developer to the council. So those include Mine Brook Park, which would be located in a portion of block 71. They include concealed parking, which the plan in great, somewhat great detail describes how the elevation, the topography should be used to conceal parking, a traffic study, streetscape improvements, including modifications to Quimby Lane, dealing with the affordable housing obligation, and creating a feasibility analysis for a potential new pedestrian connection to Boilin Terrace and open space improvements along transit. So I'm going to move now into the land use details, so again, the lines that the conceptual development plan needs to color in, but like, as I move from that section, you know, there's a subsequent agreement with a redeveloper that will ultimately happen. In that agreement, there's a conceptual development plan which details each of the proposed pieces of the project, including importantly, the public benefits. It's the big takeaway from there. So these standards for each of these sub-areas that are included in the plan, again, provide like the parameters that any developer will need to work into. Generally, as I said, sort of east-west breakdown, generally, the properties east of Quimby Lane, SubAreas 1, 2, 3, and 5, have one or two permitted uses, and those uses are mixed use, which in the context of our plan means ground floor commercial, active ground floor commercial with upper floor residential. For the location with the Bernards Inn, hotel is also a permitted use, for the location with the movie theater, theater is also a permitted use, but really trying to create a sort of ground floor commercial, upper floor residential gathered around the plaza. And then west of, west of Quimby, a variety of uses, but really an intent that development there is restricted, and that's not really our choice, that's really a result of the presence of the floodway. And as I note there, you know, park also being a permitted use there with the ultimate intention of creating that, that Mine Brook Park. A little note on height, we've limited height around the outside of the property or of the redevelopment area, two, three stories, fronting on Mill, on Alcott, and on Mine Brook. There are provisions in the plan to allow for a fourth story at these internal areas. Here where the post office is, and then here in the rear of Lot 2. The rationale being that the height there is, A, stepped back from the street, but also, B, when I showed you that sort of bowl in the beginning, that the added height there, the fourth story, is concealed within that bowl. West of Quimby, heights are lower, again, as a result of the floodway and the effort to restrict or limit development in those areas. So just to give you a little peek into what I was saying about that bowl, that hole, and how the fourth story would function, the property on Mill Street is allowed to be, meaning the post office parking lot is allowed to be three stories, fronting on Mill Street, and then as we step away from the curb, as the hill goes down, it can be four stories. Again, you can see how that height is hidden. And then similarly, down the hill a little bit, the back end of Lot 2, four stories, again, using the low topography. And we can give you some more detail on those later if you'd like. In terms of the residential regulations, we have detailed units per acre for each of the districts, varied based on our perspective of the developability. There's restrictions on the number of studio bedrooms, restrictions on the number of one bedrooms, and a mandate to provide the 15% affordable housing obligation. And I'll just sort of close this section by noting that there's a lot of other stuff in there. So we have building design standards, dealing with architecture and materials, et cetera. Those are taken largely, I won't say exclusively, but largely from the pending downtown zoning ordinance to create that consistent feel, detailed site design standards about lighting, landscaping, et cetera. Site design standards for the plaza, the park, again, those are from the, derived largely from the downtown zoning ordinance. Parking standards, again, derived from the downtown zoning ordinance, high, highly restricted surface parking, very limited surface parking, 5%, which is essentially nothing. Standards for screening, all of those things are sort of included in the meat, the meat of the plan. And then lastly, in terms of administration, as I said earlier, the plan does identify like a master redeveloper, and by that we mean one developer does everything as the ideal, but does allow for implementation via multiple parties. But regardless of whether or not we're fortunate enough to have a master developer come forward, you know, the first step for the borough and the next step, if you choose to adopt the plan, will be identifying and designating a redeveloper for SubArea 1, and then approving that conceptual development plan, which will really, as I said, color in a lot of the, a lot of the details that just can't be addressed in a redevelopment plan and wouldn't be addressed in a redevelopment plan. So I'll close, a few minutes over, by just revisiting this original implementation schedule. So as I mentioned, should you choose to introduce tonight, we go to the Planning Board at one of their next two meetings, and then to, back to you, in mid-October. And then importantly, like after adoption, I think this document in particular, like, requires the borough to be proactive and the borough to be aggressive in moving the ball forward and moving on to the next steps and to identifying and designating a developer to really get, get these benefits implemented and get the project moving. So we'll leave you with a note on how we think you should go about doing that. As I said, like, doing that in this case in particular is particularly important. And, you know, you need to, you, the council, need to identify a mechanism to identify a developer. And, you know, given the amount of public benefits associated with this project, the importance of this project, and frankly, like, the amount of new information that's been developed in the course of this planning process since the last RFP was put out, we really recommend that you pursue a new RFP to cast a wide net into the development community for implementation, should you, should you adopt the plan. So that's, that's my close. Thank you for listening to the presentation, and thank you to everybody that's participated in the production of this plan to date. I'm going to stop my share now.
All right. Thank you, Chris. That was very thorough. I'll start with council, if you have any comments or questions.
You know, Mayor, if I could just add really quickly to recap on Chris's, I just also wanted to thank that this was really a team effort with a lot of people from the borough, and we were here to put this plan together, and I'm really proud of it. Chris and our team, you know, I'll brag a little bit, we did, I think, a really great job bringing together some really difficult circumstances with regard to this property, sort of in the heart of the community, but like, there's a reason why it looks the way that it does, because it really is just so complicated. But I just, I want to thank the, you know, the original DRC, who, you know, who sort of worked with us and brought this along, Bonnie Sellers, Jeff Jeff Horowitz, Sam Madaluna, Paul Sedlack. And then, you know, we've sort of grown into a larger family, the more the merrier. And it's been, it's just been a really extraordinary experience, you know, with the mayor, Councilman O'Day, Councilman Donahue have kind of come in, come into the mix. And you all have done really, really impressive work. If you ever want jobs as planners, let me know, because you've solved some really complicated problems here in Burnsville. So you are owed a gratitude by us and hopefully by your community. So we really appreciate being allowed to be part of this.
Thank you, Phil.
Hi, everyone. We have the people who live on the 101 to 107 Mindbrook Road block here. And
We're not, we're not there. We're not in the public yet.
Okay, well, the public group isn't in favor of rezoning.
No, we're not. We're not talking rezoning right now.
Okay.
Right now, we're on the Quimby Lane redevelopment plan. Okay. We haven't gotten there yet, but
It's part of it, though, right?
It's not really. This is a separate, this is its own zoning. It it kind of complies with that, but we'll, we're going to talk about that later. Right now
It's part of the Quimby Lane project, though?
Not, not where you're there along 202 there with the
Yes, 101 to 107.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a separate thing. We'll get to that later.
Okay.
It's a different thing. Yeah. We'll get to you, honestly. Yeah, we asked you to come. You got a letter and we asked you to come tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We're just going to finish this. And then when we get to the open session, we can talk about that. Okay, so just hang on.
Okay.
Just to be clear, though, Mayor, for the public's benefit, the Quimby Lane area that we're discussing does not include the lots that the the public was just referring to. They're not included in this Quimby Lane.
No.
No.
They're not. This is just just Quimby Lane and the properties on either side of Quimby Lane and Mill Street. So this is separate. So we will get to you. Just council, did you have any comments or questions on Chris's presentation?
I just have a comment I would like to say, you know, having been involved in the process for the last 12 months on the, I think we were calling it Land Use Committee, but Downtown Redevelopment Committee is what's more commonly referred to. You know, there's been many hours of meetings and discussions, a lot of back and forth discussion with the the members of the Downtown Revitalization Committee and with the council members, the mayor and the team from Topology. So I do think that we've gone through with a fine tooth comb in the many hours of discussion what the pluses and minuses are of the approach. And I think that the the plan that's been put together by the team is a fairly robust plan. And I think it's going to open the door to a lot of opportunity that's been, I think, what I would commonly refer to as untapped potential for our downtown.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I'd like to second Councilman O'Day's message about that, someone that wasn't a regular part of this project, but part of a parallel one, which I think we're also going to discuss soon. It's really well done and I'm very excited for this next day.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think I'll echo Paul by saying, you know, thanks, everybody. I know this has been years and years in the making and I think we did end up with a good plan. So and I do appreciate everybody's time on this because I haven't been, I have definitely have not spent so much time on it. And so I really appreciate all the work everybody's put in. Thank you.
And just for the public's benefit, what we're doing tonight is we're introducing the ordinance and then we will, once it comes back from the planning board, we'll have a public hearing and then approve it. So this is not fully approved yet. We're introducing it. But we wanted to have the presentation so that people knew what it was. And we will have the whole plan posted on the website. So if you want to actually look through and read the whole plan, it will be on the website, I think, tomorrow.
Do what I, I'll just, that's somebody who was not a part of the core group, but was peripheral. But had a number of discussions with Chris Colley, I want to give him a shout out. He he's a very good listener and he took every recommendation to heart and followed up on it. And I'm very appreciative of that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, I will echo that. Chris and Phil have been incredible. I mean, they're always available. They always listen, come back with other suggestions. You guys were just terrific. So thank you so much. It's really been a pleasure working with you on this.
I think also it's worth just reemphasizing what Chris said in his original presentation, which is that, you know, we're sort of drawing the the boundaries right now, kind of outlining in conceptual basis what we want the area to look like going forward and that a lot of the greater detail and, you know, the appearance of buildings, a location of buildings, a location of the plaza, those are things that will come before the council in future meetings and be evaluated, discussed, public input gathered for those things, too. So this isn't the last year here. This is more like setting, this is one step in a longer process. And as we get further down the pike, I think people will be able to see and visualize better. The plan itself now is is sort of in broad strokes and setting the setting the outlines. I think that's also important information, you know, for everybody to know that, you know, more detail is forthcoming in the near future as we go forward, hopefully with an RFP and as we get additional information from developers.
Okay. Thank both of you for being here, Chris and Phil. And I think we'll move on now to the public session. So I will open the public session. And if you'd like to speak, if you raise your hand on the participants site there, you can actually click. There's a little hand that'll go up so that we make sure that we know who wants to speak. Anything that the public wants to talk about. So if, and we'd be happy to talk about, oh, I see Connie. Connie has her hand up, so we can unmute you. Can you unmute? There you go. Just name and address. Did you give us your name and address? And it's a three minute
My name is Connie Wood. Okay, I live at 107 Mindbrook.
I didn't catch your name.
Oh, wait, it's Connie Wood, W O O.
Connie Wood. Okay, my husband and I own 101 Mindbrook and 107 Mindbrook. We got the notice that they want to zone our block commercial. I do not agree with that. I know my husband doesn't either. I want to know what our tax rates change. I want to know, has anyone expressed any interest in developing this property to anyone on the council? You know, is there someone specific who's interested in this group of homes? We're on a hill on a wall that I was told was built by rogling, which I don't know if it's true or not. But my house has been in this location almost 100 years. Before that, it was behind the old drive-in bank building on 202. It was moved by Oxon in the 20s. There's limited access, limited parking. I feel that just because you can change something doesn't mean you should. And there's a lot of commercial property around, but empty. Why do we need more commercial property? I plan to stay here a while longer.
Yeah, you kind of froze up there.
Yes, I'm on the same street as Connie. And I totally agree.
Can you just state your name, please, and your address?
Rory Robbie, 101 Mindbrook.
Thank you. I see Hellshaw.
I feel that the revitalization project for the downtown area over by Quimby, all of that looks lovely. The plans look lovely. It's a nice idea to draw more people. But at this moment in time, of course, we have a lot of empty storefronts, empty businesses, a lot of banks, a lot of nail salons, this sort of thing. It does look great to have more public space. It looks beautiful. But why, why the need to infringe on these couple of homes that are along Mindbrook Road? As Connie had stated, the homes are over 100 years old, many of them. And many of us have been here a long time and we don't have any plans of moving at the moment. And this is really news to us. I had heard about the downtown area revitalization, but I had never heard anything about the homes being set up as commercial properties.
Okay, thank you. I see Sarah Sui.
Mayor, could I, could I just ask a question? I'm wondering if we should address the one, one question that seems to be on people's minds about the tax impact from such a change. And I think Jack Pigeon had an answer which would be useful to address that one specific question.
If we did reach out to our tax assessor on that and our attorney, Jack, do you want to answer?
Yes, I consulted with the assessor before the meeting and he assured me that in the case of a residential property that's rezoned commercial, he does not reassess that property or raise the assessment on that property as long as it's maintained as a residential property, even though the zoning has changed.
Yeah. And I think your other question, Connie, is, I mean, as far as I know, no one has, we have not had any interest in from a commercial developer. I don't know if anyone else has, but I have heard nothing about anyone being interested in buying all those houses or doing anything at this point. It's more about the redefining what we call our downtown. And I think because there's commercial across the street that it just seemed like, you know, it should all be included at some point, maybe 50 years before it ever becomes anything. But it was just in the, you know, future looking. Should we ever expand the downtown? That was where it could go. So, but I, yeah, I understand your concerns. I saw Sarah Sui's hand up. I don't see her. Is she here?
Sarah?
Eric, Council.
Here you are.
Okay. Hi. Good to see everyone again virtually. And I just, so I'm not here to speak about Quimby. And but it's more so about the Audi site. So my partner, Sam Madali, is also a Burnsville resident and is on this call today for this meeting. And we have actually been working with the owners of the Audi site to acquire the property. We heard of, you know, there's some conversation with some of the redevelopment committee meetings that brought up going out to condemn the property through eminent domain potentially. But we are looking to do this through the free market and we do have a letter of intent. So I just wanted to present that formally. You know, to the borough and wanted to introduce ourselves. And we do believe that that will be a much shorter timeline. And I think that, you know, we can all say that this being our hometown, we want to see the best result for it. So.
Thank you. I did see the letter of intent. Sam came in the email, in an email. So I think that's a positive step forward.
Thank you.
So do you have any timeline of when you think maybe this will happen or?
We're hoping as soon as possible. So we have been working on this for the past few months. And, you know, as soon as we get the green light, we're looking to make the downtown an even better place.
We actually had a few meetings with sellers also. And both the sisters are very interested to download the property. Their mindset has been changed. They're willing to work with me. I'd actually said with two times already with Silver Group. It looks very positive. It should be done very, very soon.
That's good news.
I live in Burnsville as a resident of the Burnsville. I would appreciate if you give us a first chance to RFP and give us a chance, opportunity to be a builder on this Audi property to make the the Morristown Road look much better than how the building looks really as a sort of at this time.
And Sam is on Chapin Road, yes?
I live on 10 Chapin Road, Burnsville. I've been here for the last 10 years, so.
I don't think we have to do anything at this point. Jack, I don't
No, we should not discuss it this evening. They're certainly, you know, more than able to present their their position and it should be passed on to Joe DiMarco, our redevelopment attorney, and she goes through that process.
Okay, excellent. Thanks for thanks for, thanks for the update and good luck with that. That would be really good news. I see Vincenzo, is it Caruso Valente? Do you see them?
Yes. Hi, Mayor. Thank you.
Hi.
I know I have three minutes, so I actually prepared a statement so I don't go over my time. And I see that Mr. Soriano is taking time. So I want to be mindful and respectful and appreciate everybody's ear this evening, as I have my prepared statement, which I tried to make as concise as possible. I am resident of Burnsville, 5 Lloyd Road. My intention on the call this evening is to talk about the speeding, the egregious speeding issues that happen on Lloyd Road on a daily basis. So very quickly, I'm sharing with you, my family and I moved here six years ago because of the reputation of having a strong sense of community and being a safe place to live and raise a family. The past several months, that sense of safety has completely diminished and gone away based on what I see happening on a daily basis with the hazardous driving that goes up and down Lloyd Road. The hazardous driving that I see daily includes the following reckless left and right hand turns at egregious speeds from Mendham Road, which I just witnessed this evening twice on two separate occasions by cars with New York City license plates. Number two, reckless driving and excessive speeding up the middle of Lloyd Road by way of hardscrabble. And three, speeding in excess of 35 miles an hour while texting. The reckless driving population includes everyone from landscaping truck to teenagers to adults to Amazon drivers all hours of the day. In mid-August, I watched a teenager almost fatally struck, struck, strike my 11-year-old daughter as she rode her bike down winding way to make a left onto Lloyd Road while this Jeep Wrangler and this young male drove in between the yellow lines because of the potholes and poor road conditions while he was on his cell phone. Had I not been standing there that day, my daughter's fate, along with that driver's fate, would have been disastrous had she made that left turn onto Lloyd Road. As he sped past me, I urged him to slow down and put his phone down. His response was a middle finger back to me. As I'm sure you can appreciate, my emotion consumed me. And I realized it was my opportunity to turn my emotion into action, which is why I'm here tonight. I'm asking you all to take action with me and imploring that as our elected officials of this town, we take the necessary steps to quickly decrease the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on Lloyd Road. A study was conducted by the DOT that indicated that someone being hit by a car at 45, 40 miles per hour increases their likelihood to be killed by 80 to 90%. Hitting, getting hit by a car at 30 miles per hour, 40 to 50% likelihood to be killed. 20 miles per hour, 5 to 10% likelihood to be killed. Very simply, there is a correlation between speed and safety. Speed kills. End of story. The data and facts do not lie. There are no sidewalks on Lloyd Road, which increases, which increases risk when anyone speeds on Lloyd Road. Many drivers speed every day, as I just witnessed an hour ago. Unfortunately, there were no officers patrolling Lloyd Lloyd Road today. 20 children under the age of 12 live on Lloyd Road. Good news and most important, standards are based off of necessity. There is no necessity or benefit for a 35 mile an hour speed limit on Lloyd Road. There is only continued increased risk. There is no negative impact to the speed limit being reduced to 25 miles per hour. No one loses, everyone's, everyone wins, and the risk of death decreases by 50%. That is a fact. The safety of our road, residents and children increases. Our town experiences tangible benefits from the speed reduction, which includes a continued reputation for being a town who is committed to being a safe community, positive impact on property values and our community ranking, which many people use to make their decisions to remain in Burnsville or when they're looking for a new town to live and raise their family. In 2008, the DOT allowed for local jurisdictions to be accountable for decisioning and setting the speed limits for their local roads. Lloyd Road is a local road. The decision, therefore, lies in our elected officials' hands and we need action. We have an opportunity to make a significant positive change that everyone benefits from and most importantly mitigates significant that everyone benefits from and most importantly mitigates significant risk to our community and to our children. Waiting for a catastrophic event is not a recipe for success. It is allowing for failure to prevail. Are you for safety and success or are you for catastrophic failure? A speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour is the only way we achieve success. I appreciate everybody listening and thank you.
Thank you. What is, the speed there is now 35?
It is 35. That is correct.
And I know the Public Safety Committee has discussed this and it's on our agenda. So I'm assuming Councilman Hammond will report out later.
It's Agenda Item 6J, I believe. So yeah, we have a recommendation for that.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public have anything they'd like to speak about?
Yeah, it looks like Chris Caponegro does.
Um, in the chat.
I'm saying that and then I'm hearing in the, our distant pop, so we'll get both of them.
Okay. Yes, Chris, you may have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Conus, and thank you for the council for hearing us today. It's very hard for me to add to very much for Vincenza. But what I will say is that I'm also a Lloyd Road resident. I have stood in the middle of Lloyd Road trying to prevent cars that are going in excess of 40 to 50 miles an hour to slow down, only to find myself to have to duck to the side of the road because they're not even paying attention or seeing me in the middle of the road. Can you imagine if any of my three pre-teen children were in that situation? I don't even let them ride the bikes in the town, which is a, you know, something that I enjoyed as a, as a child because I have to escort them across Lloyd Road, which is supposed to be a graceful, small residential road. It's abysmal. I will tell you as a, you know, as an adult, I, I assess risk for a living. That is what I do. Okay? And from everything that I see here, it's just a disconsolate reason why Lloyd Road is 35 miles an hour when hardscrabble, which is an adjoining road, is 25. And there's nothing that would necessitate anything that would constitute something that would be a means for needing to have Lloyd Road be 35. It's not like people are rescued, people that have to speed to some other destination with a point of origin from Lloyd Road. It makes no sense, especially when other aspects of the adjoining road of Mendham Road and then Anderson Hill Road dissipate down to 25 miles an hour. It just simply does not make sense. You know, and even from my heart, when I was a little kid, I lived on a busy road and a fellow classmate of mine, six years old, died in front of my house by getting hit by a car. Okay? So like every day, ever since I was that age, you know, 45 years ago, when I was that age, or 44 years ago, you know, I've had to live with that and also be reminded every time my kids get on a bike and go outside my own house. Right? So it's so simple, you know, there's no downside. I appreciate this time in front of everyone here listening in. But really, like, you know, if, let's put it to 25 and if, if for whatever reason we fail the township because of our speed, you know, diminution on our road, we can have another hearing to see why we need to raise it to 35 again. Right? It just doesn't make sense. And I sure, I know all other roads in the town probably want to be 25. And guess what? They probably should be. But, you know, why not make Lloyd Road one of the first ones in that, in that, in that genre? And, uh, and, you know, we can increase the, the safe school ratings and such that, as Vincenza mentioned, so many potential homeowners that are looking at Burnsville care about, especially when your children are within the, you know, we're within one mile of Bedwell Elementary School. Right? And, you know, our kids can't bike or walk to school because of this. And, you know, we're not provided with paid busing or anything, nor do we want it. But what we do want is the ability for our kids to feel safe to just cross the street and move on to other safe. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Chris. Hopefully we'll get that, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it later. And is that, let me just, you know, do you find that what you're getting on there for traffic? Just curious, is people cutting through, you know, instead of going into town, they cut through and get over to 202, the back way?
Yeah, it's not even, it's not even a lot of people. We're just saying like, they're, when people are there, they're, they're actually problematic because they are cutting through. I mean, anyone who's, you know, originating from Lloyd gets it. Anyone who's, you know, cutting through just even a side street to take a friend to somewhere else gets it. But it's people coming from Mendham and other places that choose not to go down Washington Valley or something.
Actually, if I, if I may, it, it actually is a relatively heavily trafficked road. I was surprised. If you had asked me before we had our Public Safety Committee meeting, that question, I would have said, well, there's not much cutting through. But in truth, the police did do a very brief traffic study. And even in the midst of COVID, when there's, the schools are out and a lot of people are still working from home, on average, there's about 3,000 cars a day that travel either one direction or the other combined. It's a pretty heavily traveled road.
It is. And Councilman Hammond, this is Vincenza, just to interject, just because I, I am, I have an unfortunate seat at the corner of Lloyd and Mendham Road. So I get to watch two very busy roads. And what I can tell you is that I've been home for the past six months, like many of us. And I used to sit on the 24th floor of my office in Manhattan. Also, like Chris, I assess risk for a living as part of my job. And for me to, what I have been witnessing is, is that Burnsville is a heavily sought-out town to move to, given so many individuals are flocking out of New York City and, and those heavily urban areas. And the New York City population that is coming into, into Burnsville is incredibly high. The amount of license plates that I see from New York is astronomical versus what I saw a year ago. And from my point of view, the traffic's been increased because everybody is home and I think that people are seeking to move here. And as a result, there's been increased traffic that's happened.
Okay, thank you. I see Karen with a hand up.
Yes.
Just your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Karen at 103 Mine Brook. And I have a few questions. I'll just make it really brief. They mentioned the master developer may have eminent domain rights for the Quimby Lane. Does that also mean you're going to extend those rights to the smaller blocks, the outlier blocks, which is where we are?
No, they do not. We do not have eminent domain on Quimby. It was only for the Audi dealership. That was the only one that we did that.
Yeah.
There's also no intention, there's no intention for any kind of eminent domain related to this rezoning either. So that's an important point.
Well, doesn't, you know, we haven't done in the past and we really don't want to do.
Okay. And then the other thing is the zoning, I noticed, I looked a little bit yesterday. Sorry about this, coming into this so lately or so late. But the RDP zoning, is that what this would be? Would this be C1 RDP, which has the setbacks of, I believe, 10 feet from property line to property line?
Chad, do you know that answer?
Not off the top of my head. I can look, I can look quickly.
Okay, because we are in non-conforming lots to begin with. And I've already had a little bit of an issue with trying to build on my lot first. And then to add to this, if I was to ever build on to it or somebody was to build on to it or consider building on to it as a commercial property, if it has those setbacks, these are lots that are useless.
Come on, man, right here, honey. I don't know if you can, they're very steep in the front too, aren't they?
Right. And the wall. That was my next question and final. So if you want to address those. What is the council feeling about that?
I mean, Mayor Conus, I mean, do we talk about the fact that there's, I mean, that's where they got the letter, right? To ask questions about it. We're not, we're not introducing it yet tonight. It's still a work in progress. So the council then, you know, having your input, we may go back and say, let's take those, that section out. That's for us to work on, you know, but we appreciate getting public input on it. So. And is there information about like, you know, letters that they can file to keep, to maintain their, the residential, if they sell it from a residential to another residential? It would only be if they sold it to a developer, correct?
Jack, can you answer?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, then having all of the facts about things like that would be good information. But I thought that, you know, we were, you know, they'll, they'll get additional letters in the future about it.
So, so Jack and Council, and Councilwoman McCready, I think what we're saying is that if a person lives in one of the properties now and gets a letter in the first 12 months, if any zoning change did occur, if they got a letter of pre-existing non-conforming use, they, they would be eligible to have the property stay residential forever if they stay in it and they could sell it to somebody else who keeps it residential forever as well. Is that right?
Just for the small technicality, they're entitled to use it for residential forever, whether or not they get a certificate of non-conforming use. They would just, the burden is on the property under the show they have a non-conforming use. During the first 12 months, they can get that certification from the zoning officer.
At no cost.
After 12 months, they have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
They can get that certification at no cost too. Is that no cost, Jack?
Yeah, that's right. During the first 12 months, there's no cost.
And I'm sorry, I interrupted you. And that they could, they could stay residential forever and it would only be, the only reason you need the letter of non-conformance would be if you're selling the property and the person who's buying it wants it to be residential as well.
That's right. Or if at some point in the future, there's a new zoning officer who's not familiar with it, you know, may try to enforce the zoning officer. So it would certainly be to their benefit to get that certificate during the first 12 months if in fact the property's rezoned.
Okay.
Okay. I see Joanne, Joanna Wissinger?
Yes. Joanna Wissinger, I live on Washington Corner Road, kind of parallel with Lloyd. And I just want to quickly say, if you investigate and consider 25 miles an hour, fine. But make sure you do it for Washington Corner Road also because I personally think there's more traffic on Lloyd because it's such a nice road to drive. It has less hills and less site problems that Washington Corner has. Right now, the edges of Washington Corner are disintegrated. So law trucks are, well, they know it and they have an option, they avoid it because there's not always enough route. I know the road, so I dip into people's driveways so that we can all get by if I see something big coming. So just consider, you do one, you should do the other because I think Lloyd gets more traffic and faster because it's a nice road to ride on.
But also, it also, a little bit, the speeds have increased a bit because we paved it now recently.
Yes.
And that, you know, it's a double-edged sword in that regard.
Right. And it's wider now. It's nice. Okay.
Yeah, no, good point. I see a bunch of people who aren't getting their hands up. Harvey Goldberg, do you want to?
And there's also a CA Dugan before that.
And David D. Simone. Yeah, we have three people. Yep.
Who wants to go first? How about, who went for, David D. Simone, let's do.
Yeah, he was first.
First. Just unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can anybody give me a brief history of that floodway that's on Mine Brook? I've walked it. I know it was manufactured, but I don't really know the true background because it seems to be influencing the RDA.
Chris, can you address that?
The history, meaning like how, how it first came to be? How it was created? How, I don't actually know the historical origins of the Mine Brook. I can tell you the floodway standards are standards from the BEP and from FEMA. But as to the history, it's a good question that I don't really answer too. I know it's been there since at least the 40s. But perhaps somebody else might have more historical perspective as to when it was.
I bet Peter Palmer would know. I don't know if he's on the call. He was going to come on the meeting. I don't know if he's here. But yeah, we can find that out for you.
He is here, at least, but he's probably muted.
Peter Palmer, do you answer to that?
I had asked to unmute, so maybe he'll unmute.
I see Kathleen. Oh, there he is, Peter. Oh, he is unmuted. Peter, can you, is your mic working?
Yes.
There you go. We're asking about the history of the Mine Brook behind on Quimby Lane there. How that was directed or the walls built. Do you know anything about that?
Not really. I, I do remember a really long time ago when we had a particularly heavy rain, probably a hurricane where the, the Mine Brook was flooded right over 202. But based on my recollection, it's, it's been there ever. I mean, there's that, where Mill Street, where Mill Street crosses over the, over the Brook, there's a, quite an arch there, a tunnel for the Brook that, that, that's, well, I'm 84, but that's been, that's been there as far as I know.
And Peter was born here, so, and he's a former mayor. Yeah. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, anytime.
Yeah. All right. That's an interesting question though. I mean, maybe we can do some research on that.
I think it's an important one too, because part of the, the plan is to help reemphasize one of the beautiful things in this town that I don't think most people even know exists.
Yeah. Interesting to do a study on the, on the Brook. We have CA Dugan.
Hi, it's Catherine Jigan. I'm here with my husband Eric. We're at 40 Lloyd Road. We wanted to provide our perspective of the risk of speeding on our road. I can say that I, I walk our dogs twice a day up and down our road. And what exacerbates the risk of the high speeds is the lack of shoulder. So if someone is going 35 miles an hour, there's nowhere to go, especially on the very blind curve midway through Lloyd Road. So, you know, it's dangerous to have people speeding. We would prefer the speed limit be at 25. And I would just emphasize that because of the lack of shoulder, one side of the road has a steep kind of uphill embankment and the other side is steep down. So if you're on the road and you're coming around that blind curve, there's nowhere for you to go except to jump off the road, kind of downhill. And people just come around that curve and then speed up on their way up to Vincenza's towards Anderson Hill. I jump off the road down that ditch at least once a day. So our preference is strongly towards lowering the speed limit to 25 miles an hour so that our son could walk.
I'm losing you there. I think you froze.
Mayor Jane, could we go, if we could, I have the draft ordinance up. We don't have the folks from topology here this evening. I'm sorry, from the common ground, because we did not introduce the new zoning ordinance. But there was a question about districting.
You want to share it? Is that what you want to do?
Oh, no, I didn't want to share it. There was a question, I think they asked about a specific, I think you're referring to the Quimby Lane districting. And I think the person mentioned an RDP. The, the new zoning is actually, it's now called the DCC1 Downtown.
I think they were asking about their section of 202, across from the trains, the firehouse, you know, those houses.
Oh, okay. I was, I thought they were, I thought the address was gentleman.
Was, and I forget what, what that's called, that section, you know, going south.
The South District is now part of the Downtown Core.
Oh, it is Downtown Core. Okay. And we don't, do you know what the setbacks are for that?
Give me a second. I can tell you what the setbacks are for Downtown Core. Excuse me if I'm not.
I have the document in front of me, Chad.
Oh, Jeff's right there. Lovely, Jeff. It's all yours.
Right. It, it has a side yard setback of five feet, a rear yard minimum five and a maximum of 20. The distance between. The distance between the buildings is 10 feet. The maximum build-out is 80%. And, uh, the front yard is a minimum of two, a maximum of five feet. That's in the Downtown Core, the DC.
Thank you.
Okay.
That information that it was 10 feet is incorrect.
Yes, I don't see 10 feet for either side, rear, or front.
A- and the full revised, uh, ordinance will, should be available for public posting for our next meeting. Uh, we had some additional eyes to dot, um, at the planning board that are delaying its, its, um, it being brought here.
Okay, um, I forget who asked that question. Was it Karen?
Yeah, I can't remember the gentleman's name.
It was Karen Flynn.
Is that, was, did that answer your question, Karen?
Actually, I thought it was Rory.
It was actually Karen, and it did answer my question, but it leads me to another question. Uh, this DC1, um, where is that in the zoning? Because I scoured through the zoning last night for quite a while.
Well, this is. DC1, I, I got confused with folks at different addresses. The DC1 subzone is actually down Clamont Road, so I, I, I misheard your address.
Right, the area where you are, Karen, is, uh, is going to be called the DC Zone, Downtown Core. And that goes from, uh, the, the, the extreme west side of, uh, Mine Brook in the area where everybody got the letters and goes through to the King Shopping Center.
Well, with my 30-foot-wide lot that reaches back and L's off to the side like a letter R, what would somebody want that for commercially?
I, I'm not a developer. I couldn't answer that.
Yeah, I couldn't either.
Yeah, I don't thi- I think, um, you know, at some point, if somebody wanted to buy all four or five, how many properties are there, it might be worth something, but, you know, I don't think individually people are gonna want to develop those lots um, be- just because of the, the shapes and the sizes, but, um, it was just a matter of, of trying to keep the zoning consistent.
Yeah.
But we will post that once it's ready.
Yeah, and we'll have full public comment with all the appropriate experts here to provide even more answers to detailed questions.
Have the people who did the, actually did it be able to answer your questions, but, um, you know, we wanted to address at least the tax issue tonight, because I know Connie had brought that up. Um, but we will, we will be talking about it more. It's, it's not, um, it's not on the agenda to introduce at this point, so we've got at least two more meetings before we will take any action on it. Um, so there's more, more to be discussed, and we appreciate your input.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, the last meeting that we had when this topic first came up, there was a discussion about these particular properties, and what we said as a council is that we wanted the property owners to tell us what they think and what their concerns are. We want to hear from you, and that's why we sent these, uh, letters out directly to all the affected properties, was because we're interested in your input. We don't want to, you know, do things just blindly and then have it, you know, have a unintended consequence. So that's the reason that you received the letters, was so that we can hear from you.
If, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be worth it to any developers to buy the properties unless they're buying all properties? Would it be worth it to not rezone these properties?
If you.
Yeah, I think that's a question for the, the experts, to be honest. So let's, uh, if we could table that question till, till, uh, for two meetings, I, I would be very interested in what they would have to say in that regard as well. I, I hear and understand what you're saying.
Yep.
But there may be a very specific, um, reason. Again, the, the idea here, this is a forward-looking document that's look, you know, that's pretty to 50-year vision.
We kind of faded out there. Okay, um, Harvey, I.
Um, sorry, Mary Jane, I don't, I don't know if we go back to Catherine Dugan, because they were like, kind of cut off with their internet connection before we.
I wasn't sure if you were finished. Did you have, did you have more to say? I see you're very down. Yeah.
Well, it's not my wife, now it's, it's me, Eric Dugan. My wife, I was with my wife, so. Um, so thanks for the opportunity for, uh, since I want to say, first of all, fantastic job by you with all that data. I think that was huge, and I thank you for your efforts, and I think all the children and the parents on our street, thank you. Um, a lot of you obviously don't know because you don't live on Lloyd Road. We do, and I appreciate Joanna, what you're saying on Washington Road.
There you go, you froze up again.
Well, while Mr. Dugan's frozen, can I just, uh, ask for clarification? So, uh, Ms. Whistenger, you were saying that we should address both roads at the same time, because if we lower the speed limit on one road, it may push the traffic to the other road. Was that what you were saying? No, you're on, you're on mute, Joanne.
Yeah, you're muted.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just simply think that if you just, uh, make a 25 for one and not both, the traffic will increase on Washington, and that's pretty dan- I think that's, right now, it's pretty dangerous because it's narrower and not as smooth and et cetera.
Westman Hammond, is that something the Public Safety Committee looked at when, uh, they were looking at their recommendation that we're gonna hear later tonight?
No, that had not come up to us about, uh, Washington. Um, we, we, we've actually talked about some other roads where, which we've had some complaints, but uh, this is the first we've heard of that one.
Yeah, we haven't complained. I, I didn't know why it hasn't been addressed. I, I was thinking that we had, uh, gas lines put in, and it would be intelligent to do the road after, uh, some of my neighbors had their gas lines put in, but that was just, um, you know, an idea that I had.
Jeff, I've heard the same thing talked about Chestnut as well.
Well, yeah, Chestnut, we, we know about it, and that's, um, a, a, a bad road that, in terms of, uh, its condition, that is, is on the list for being milled and paved, uh, but, um, you know, those, those two roads have not bubbled up to the Public Safety Committee in terms of speeding.
I wonder if Mr. Miller knows here. Maybe he has an opinion. He's on my block too.
Who?
Um, Fire Chief.
Glenn Miller.
Yeah, Glenn Miller. I thought I saw him. Okay.
Glenn, did you have an opinion? Um, you know what, he's, it looks like he doesn't have, uh, a microphone.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, um, Mr. Dugan back? No. Okay. Can we go to Harvey now?
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead. It's Harvey Goldberg.
Yeah, I, um, our group owns the corner of Old Cott Square going down Mine Brook Road with the Cinema Building and you know, the eight storefronts that, that are, I think, um, square number four on the plan, so that everybody has a perspective of where I'm coming from. Uh, I was under the impression that tonight's meeting would codify the plan, and next month's meeting would be the vote to accept or reject the plan. But what I gather from the, what I saw here tonight, that's not the case, that it's gonna be pushed further back, and it won't be December or January before there's an approval of this whole Quimby Village Plan. Is that?
No, um, sorry. Um, you know, I think what we, we, what's confusing is we're, you know, because we're talking about the zoning and talking about the redevelopment plan, and they're two separate plans, and I think that's confusing for the public. Um, the redevelopment plan we are introducing tonight, it'll go to the planning board in early October to just verify that it's, um, consistent with the master plan. It'll come back to the council probably October 13th, and then it, we will approve it. And that'll, and then it'll be done. The zoning is what we're talking about, is, we've got a few more meetings left yet.
So just to follow up on that, does that mean that after the October 13th meeting, if it's approved, then it goes out for developers to bid on?
Yes. Yeah, then we will do an RFP probably and, uh, start accepting proposals from bidders, from, um, developers. Yeah.
And when would you pick a, a developer?
Uh, I guess it depends on what we get in proposals and how many we get, and, you know, and reviewing them and deciding which is, uh, the best fit.
I could easily give you, just.
I just wanted, Chris, is there usually a, you know, can you give an estimate of how long that usually takes?
Uh, I mean, it's gonna partially be at the direction of the council in terms of how quickly they put the RFP out, but the RFP should be out for at least bare minimum of 30 days, I would say probably 60 days. Then we're gonna have to review the responses. So yeah, if your question is like, will we not be hearing and, and the council considering potential developers until early January, like, yeah, that's probably, probably sounds about right.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks very much.
All right, Harvey, thank you. Um, did we have anyone else? I didn't see any other hands. I don't see anything in the chat. Anyone else from the public? All right, then I will close the public hearing. Um, and now I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2020-1849 and Ordinance Appropriating $11,000 from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund for reimbursement to the Somerset Hills Little League for renovations to the Kiwanis Little League Field. Would anyone from the public want to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing no one? Nope, somebody's talking, okay. Um, I will close the public hearing. Uh, where's Gina?
Here. I, I had to turn my video off because it's lagging everywhere, so.
That's terrible tonight, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. Um, do you want to move that ordinance? Because it's technically recreation-ish.
Um, I can. I have a question on it, though, first.
Oh, okay.
If that's possible, and then I'll, it'll give me time to, uh, pull up the actual.
Don't we have to move in second, and then we can discuss it?
Yeah.
Okay, I have to pull up the, uh, if we don't have the, the agenda. I don't have it up, so you'll have to give me a minute.
I have to abstain, so.
It's just, it's the top of page two on the agenda.
Yeah, I just have to pull up the whole thing, and I can't do it. I'm a, uh.
Well, I could, you want me to do, I could do it just in.
I can move it.
Yeah, if you've, if you have it handy, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, uh.
Thank you.
I moved the pass ord- ordinance, uh, 2020-1849, and ordinance appropriating $11,000 from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund for reimbursement to the Somerset Hills Little League for renovations to the Kiwanis Little League Field on final reading and adopted, published.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so you had a question before we do a vote?
Yeah, I just, I, I think that I asked this way back when it first was introduced, but it wasn't in the, in the packet, so I was just wondering what the, um, what the actual renovations were, and I realize it was, this is a request to the Borough for 50% of the total of what Somerset Hills Little League spent, but I was just wondering what the renovations actually consisted of.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that, Mayor, if you'd like me to. So, uh, approximately once every 10 years, um, fields need to be breed up, re- dug up and leveled, where else, when you rake fields, you develop a lip on the outside rims that essentially activates ramps that send, uh, baseballs directly upward. So there was two purposes for the renovation. One was a routine maintenance on the field, which, uh, levels the field off and makes it a safe playing, uh, surface. The second reason was a transition um, from what's considered a Little League field for younger kids from, which has a distance of 40 feet and 60 feet to various, uh, areas, to an intermediate field, which is 50, 70 feet, um, in designation. Now, there's a trend in baseball nationwide for kids younger to move to bigger fields, which are both safer and also allows for a slightly better playing surface. So the league felt it was important to have that field available, since many of the neighboring towns were going that direction, um, so that we could include 13-year-olds in our league, um, and also allow our 10, 11, and 12-year-olds to move into a bigger field.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, um.
Could I, I just want a quick question. Uh, I, I'm, I'm in favor of all this, but, uh, is this coming from $2,019 left over from the Open Space Fund or $2,020?
It, it's not really designated in one area versus the other, and, uh, we actually have an ordinance coming up after this, which is related to the pathway around the, um, the Polo Grounds. When you take the combination of the two, you're gonna use up all of the 2,000, the prior to 2019 money, it will definitely be used between the two options. So if we approve both tonight, we'll be using 100% of the leftover funds from prior to 2019 and dipping in on the order of about 20,000 into post-2019 funds, roughly speaking.
Okay, because I mean, I think, uh, well, actually, this gets to the question, Mayor, maybe you can answer. Um, what is the timeline for the consultant on the redevelopment to give us a prioritization scheme, so we don't deal with a, a number of one-off requests like this, uh, or, you know, or piecemeal requests, uh, and we have a, a, a kind of a comprehensive plan?
Oh, I don't know. I, I see Bob Markowitz. I don't know if you've talked to Pat Hogland lately. I mean, the surveys are still out, so I think we've got, and the whole process was supposed to take, I believe, like, uh, at least a year, wasn't it? To get the plan done, the comprehensive plan?
I, I recall it being something on the order of 10 months, but maybe 12.
Close to a year, and we got slowed down with COVID in trying to get public input, so, um, it may be uh, longer than we expected to get.
Well, we'll just, uh, we'll deal with things as they come, and, uh, I know that the, the pathway that we talked about, that we're gonna vote on a little bit later today, is something that's been on our prioritization scheme for quite a while, and, and obviously, the Little League issue is a safety one, so, um, you know, uh, I think everybody is happy to move forward, but we, we're gonna have other requests, and we really want to be able to handle them in an intelligent way. By the way, I, I just have a notice here. Peter Bernbaum wants to speak, but, but he doesn't have a hand-raised icon.
Um, I don't see that. Where do you see that?
No, in the chat.
I, I just typed that, because he, he sent me a message about not having the, the hand raised.
But what, I mean, we're not in a public session now, so what did, what was he gonna speak of?
I, I assumed it was the public hearing for this ordinance, but I, maybe not, but that's what I assumed.
Oh, is it? Okay, so he missed the opportunity, so should we let him do it? Where is he? I don't see him.
Yeah, I mean, if he didn't have the hand raised, uh, it was hard for him to get everybody's attention.
Um, okay, Peter, you had something to, uh, contribute?
Uh, yes, uh, I do. Uh, I just wanted to know if, um, this was, um, reimbursement sort of like after the fact, is that correct?
It's in parallel right now. The, uh, work, I think, has, uh, recently been bid. I don't know if it's actually been started. Chad, could you answer?
It's been started.
Okay.
It is not complete.
And, and the other thing is then, is this a precedent so that other organizations or groups could come back and, and also ask for reimbursement for some of their things that they've contributed as well? I'm not, you know, I just, you know, it's precedent, and, um, I know that we've always been concerned about precedents in the past, and just it, it's discussed. I'm not, uh, no comment on, on the value or the need for it, but it just kind of opens up, uh, a, a door, and there's lots of people do lots of things.
Yeah, I think what's, uh, unique about Kiwanis Field is that it, it's borough property and they're technically borough field, and we should be doing the work ourselves, and the fact that, uh, Little League contributes a lot of funds to maintain and, and upkeep that is kind of unique, I think, in, on that particular field compared to other places.
Like, like, other towns where, um, groups that used it that were not technically, um, or, uh, organized under the Charter of the, of the town and run by the recreation frequently did give back a lot, and, and it's a very good thing to do. Uh, certainly for, um, you know, matching funds, uh, concept is also another, another great idea. I just wondering if it's gonna be precedent, and you'll have others, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, and I, I guess we, you know, we'll look at them on a case-by-case basis. Um, and we did also send this to all the committees that we were required to send to. to send to. And I think we got feedback just from Open Space, but everybody got a copy of it. So, and that's part of what we're required to do. And we did do that. So roll call, please.
It's just Peter's point. It's worth noting, Peter, that the Little League had said that even if we had voted no, they were still going to self-fund it. They were going to proceed. So, you know, I think it's worthwhile noting that, you know, it was an important project. They were going to do it. They've asked us to help out. And as the mayor's already pointed out, it's our property. So it made sense.
I mean, I think the precedent is a good point, though. I mean, because you have Veterans Field and that's borough property too. And you have, you know, the other lacrosse and football that are private organizations that do the same thing. So it is a good thing for everyone just to know and consider. And I think Councilman Hammond, your point is also a really good one from a strategy perspective on, you know, what we're supposed to be doing with the Open Space funding. Before we know it, it'll be gone.
Okay, wait. Ready? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
He abstained.
He abstaining. Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Zemara?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1850 and ordinance of the Borough of Burnsville authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of the real property located at 63 Bernard Avenue, block 102, lot 12, Burnsville, New Jersey, now owned by the estate of Michael Manella. Anyone from the public want to be heard on this? And this is property that we have designated as, as our affordable housing site. So anyone wish to be heard? Do you see anything? All right, I will close the public hearing. Councilman O'Day, would you like to move that?
Are we introducing it or we're passing it? I'm trying to remember.
Passing it. I moved to pass. Yeah.
Okay. I moved to pass ordinance 2020-1850, an ordinance of the Borough of Burnsville, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of the real property located at 63 Bernard Avenue, block 102, lot 12, Burnsville, New Jersey, now owned by the estate of Michael Manella.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Zemara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
All right, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1851 and ordinance establishing an expiration date for construction records, clearance certificates, and supplementing and amending chapter 12 of the Borough Code entitled Building and Housing. And this is mainly, I think, just when a home is sold, Jeff Price, right?
That is, that is correct, Matt. This is just so that we have some expiration date on these certifications.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on that? I don't see any. I will close the public hearing. Counselperson Zemara, would you like to move that?
Um, I moved to pass ordinance 2020-1851 on final reading and adopted, published.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen? Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Zemara?
Yes.
Okay. So now this is the walking path. Councilwoman Mc, who would like to introduce this?
Anthony, can we remind people to mute if they're not speaking? I hear a lot of background.
I will do that. I'll mute people.
Thank you.
Um, I can move this one.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Um, I move that ordinance 2020-1853 appropriating an additional $60,000 from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund for construction of the Polo Grounds Walking Path. Funding from the Borough's Open Space Fund to Polo Grounds Walking Path Project be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM Monday, September 28, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay. Christine, you want to just give us a little background on it for the public?
Sure. We, we can take this all the way back to last year, 2019, as mentioned earlier, prior to us deciding to pursue in a full comprehensive recreation plan. In the initial stages of that decision, we looked to the public via our rec department, via our open space, via our sports teams, you know, just asking for feedback from many residents about what were the types of recreational things that we should prioritize. And walking, being able to walk on a nice, flat, safe path away from traffic always came up as a, you know, a very important thing, not only for our young residents, but for older residents as well. So since that time, you know, we did begin the early stages of planning that. We engineer, we, you know, we, our borough engineer went to Polo Grounds and did the engineering to determine if it was feasible and what was the best area to do it. This process takes many, many months. Running parallel to this, we also have what was brought up earlier by Councilman Hammond, which is a survey of the entire community about forward thinking, you know, 10 years from now, what do we want in terms of recreational facilities for everyone? So in our opinion in Public Works is that, you know, we had the ball rolling then. We know it's going to be something that people can use now, especially now, because we're in a time when, you know, outdoor recreational space is something that everyone really needs. So we were hoping that we could just get something in, in place within the next few months that will, you know, eventually complement the rec plan going forward.
I think there's also one other thing. Yes. And there's one other thing that also adds to the, I think, the importance or the prioritization of this particular project, which was that a previously planned loop, paved loop around Nerveen Park had to be postponed due to NJDEP concerns. And that's postponed for one to two years. The council actioned that, I think, about two meetings ago. And as a result of that particular option not being available to people in the very near future, I think it puts greater emphasis on this as well, which is one of the other considerations during the Public Works discussions about this particular project.
Yeah, and actually, I think that was because we have to do
So just a couple of questions if I could, because I know
Yes. Councilman McQueen, any questions?
No. So I know that there's, yeah, I have a question. So I know that there last, last time this came, there were discussions about different surface rate additional dollars. So I'm guessing there were some thought and discussion around what the final service needs to be and the final cost. And can you talk about the choice?
We certainly, we certainly could.
What you were discussing last time?
We certainly could talk about those things. Is it appropriate to do it in this meeting? Or is it for the next meeting's discussion? When's the right time to do that?
Yeah, we're really just introducing it tonight.
It's fine. We're curious, never.
But so, I mean, but to answer the question quickly, this was the lowest-cost surface out of all the surfaces bid.
But it is handicap accessible. And that was
It's, but it, but it turned out to be the lowest, the lowest cost of the surface options. And that's the one that we're recommending.
And if you look, right, if you look at page, pages 106 to 112 of your agenda package, that really breaks down the multiple considerations we had to consider in our meetings and the costs of all.
So I guess I just have a question on how the public gets this information so that they can review it and come to the next meeting if they have questions or interest in what's actually happening.
Anthony, is this on, is this included in the agenda that's online?
Yeah, the ordinances are included online in the agenda packet, and it will be in the newspaper and also on the website as well, indicating the public hearing will be on September 28.
Yeah, but I'm talking more about the specifics of the ordinance, what it means, where the path would go, you know, what kind of material it is, just, you know, giving them information. Otherwise, they don't really understand what's behind it.
On page 107, on page 107 of the tonight's agenda, I don't know if that's a public, they have, they have an actual drawing that shows where the path is.
Yeah, is that, Anthony, when you post the agenda, do you post all the background information as well?
It's on page 16.
No, we decided we weren't posting the background, but I can post that map with the online version after introduction. So I could post that online on the website.
Yeah, because then people could look at it.
It's not on there now, but I can certainly post it tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I think it is, Anthony, in the agenda, though.
Okay. All right, because sometimes we don't post up backup stuff. Maybe I did with that one. So, okay.
Okay, that's good. Okay, Councilman O'Day, do you want to introduce this ordinance?
Did we already introduce it? I thought Christine already did.
No, we're on, oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving back. I've lost my spot here. Okay, yes, sorry. Yes, she did move it. Did we have a second?
I seconded. Or Jeff Hammond did.
Jeff seconded, yeah.
My page is mixed up here. Okay, so we just do it all in favor. Yes?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Who is that?
Councilman Donahue.
Okay, opposed? Abstention.
Aye, just having connectivity issues.
I was going to say, you were like a beat behind, so. All right, now, Councilman O'Day, would you introduce ordinance 1854?
Turning to the page now. Okay, I moved to introduce ordinance 2020-1854, ordinance of the Borough of Burnsville County of Somerset, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for block 70, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6.01, 6.02, 6.03, 6.04, 6.05, 6.06, 6.07, and 6.08, block 71, lots 4, 5, 5.01, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. And the Quimby Lane right-of-way, as shown on the official tax map of the Borough of Burnsville pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A, colon, 12, dash, 1, et sec, Quimby Lane.
I second.
Well, you finish be introduced?
Yeah.
Be introduced by title? You need to read the rest of it.
Oh, will be introduced by title. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page for that. Moving back. To be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM Tuesday, October 13, 2020.
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's John coming in. All right, wonderful.
Aye.
Yeah, we got you, John. Resolutions, we now have 20208A through 2021. Any that we want to do separately? I'm assuming that the deer thing, we're going to, Ed usually likes to talk about that. I don't know. Do you want to do that?
I don't need to talk about it.
I do have a question about 20212.
Yeah, I did as well, Jeff.
Which was 20212.
We can just pull that one off.
The ABC licenses?
Uh huh.
I know we've talked in the past about we having one inactive license. Is that covered in this renewal or not?
No, there will be another one for September 28 that will have more of them. I think there's four on this resolution. There's 12 totals. There will be eight for another resolution.
Yeah, correct. The four that are on here now look to be used or used.
Right, exactly.
Currently in effect. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Jeff. You handled my question as well.
Any other ones? We had to extend the time on the walking path. So that's just so that to, because the bids haven't been awarded yet. Is that what that's about?
That's right. We can't award it until the ordinance is adopted.
Right.
So the apparent loan bidder has agreed to the extension.
Okay.
So do we need the extension now? Because we
Yes, we just introduced it tonight.
We just introduced it.
Okay, I got you.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, any other ones? Anyone has questions on? Somebody like to move? Resolutions 20208A through 2021?
Yep. I'll move resolutions, resolutions 2020, oh, eight through 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Zemara?
Yes.
Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen? I didn't catch that. Sorry, Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, the next item for discussion now is the draft ordinance, 1852, for the new zoning, for creating the new downtown zoning district with the four downtown sub-districts. I know we had quite a bit of input from our zoning officer, who really went through it to look at how enforceable some of the things are in there. So those changes are being incorporated. We now have input from the residents on that one stretch who don't want to be included. So that's a topic for discussion as to whether we want to change that. I don't know if we have, do you have, Chad, do you even have that, that picture of how it lays out, you know, that long?
I do. Actually, I had it up. Just one second. Hold on.
You need to be able to share. I think that's for the residents to see how that
On my screen?
I don't, you have to be a co-host? Did you make him a co-host so he can share it?
Yeah, I just made him a co-host. Yeah.
Okay, now you should have the share screen button.
Yeah, I can. Keith's presentation.
Yes.
Keep it on your machine. It's Keith's presentation. It is PDF page six. My connection's been bad all night anyway, so it's probably best that you do it.
Anthony, can you find it in the
You have it there, Anthony?
Chad, if you go off video, it makes your connection much better.
I'm looking for, it's for Keith's presentation, page six. I can find that.
Page six. Graphic that has the DC downtown.
Yeah, I got it. I will share it right now.
Oh, good. Okay.
So just, just note why Anthony's here, because I know there's been not a whole lot of discussions since the last meeting. So we have
Um, so we have Jeff's comments that, that John and I are looking, John Zabel and I are looking to incorporate. Uh, we also have some ayes that have, had to be dotted, um, within the planning board that are happening on a rescheduled meeting, I want to say it's October 3rd. Um, so this will be ready for introduction officially, um, then for public comment at our subsequent meeting to that. But this is the illustration that was being discussed, um, and if you want to go up one quickly, Anthony, um, go up one, go to page 5, please. This is the way that it currently is owned, uh, with a variety of sub-zones that are inconsistent, and Jeff, if you want to, uh, provide comment, you're born welcome to, that take us to a more consistent zoning, um, and fewer sub-zones, so if you want to go back to the next page, Jeff. So, I mean, Anthony, which is on page 6. Jeff?
Yeah, that's.
You have that regard? And again, you know why Jeff, I'm meeting, go ahead, Jeff.
That's right, what Chad said, um, my, my department went through this, um, this new ordinance with an eye to enforcement. I didn't want to come out the other end of this and, uh, have some language that was very difficult to interpret and to enforce, so the majority of our comments were geared towards that end. And there has been a, a few other items that have been lingering for a while, um, definitions of what's a building and what's a structure. I think this would be an appropriate time to try and include, um, that language change, and, uh, John Sabo, the planner, knows all about that. And there's also something that came up this morning that, uh, Jack and I talked about, uh, and the affordable housing zones. And, um, that's something else that needs to be added to this zoning map. Um, we have one on Childs that, um, we talked, that it is not an overlay, it's an actual zone change to AH1. And during the conversation today, there was some discussion in the Quimby area of AH3, and that was discussed as, um, an overlay zone, so I don't quite understand whether we got overlays or we got actual zoning, Jack, and.
I, yeah, I did communicate with John Zabel, Jeff, uh, with respect to the Seven Childs Road, and he said that affordable housing is permitted in this new downtown zone, and therefore it's really not necessary that we do a separate overlay zone for that site. You know, I'll confirm that with him before the next meeting, but that was his response to me this evening.
Okay, all right, but if you look at the map in front of you here, where it says DG Downtown Gateway, you will see that on, on Childs, the only, the only lot that's included in that gateway zone is the, uh, gas station on the corner. The other two lots above it, uh, one of them is Seven Childs, is, is, is not in this new zone.
So why did he get a letter?
So that's, that's all then?
Yeah.
Well, he, he didn't get a letter be- because he was in the, uh, he was in the old B-zone.
Oh, so, oh, okay, I wasn't sure why he was questioning, I thought he thought his pro- his property was going to become commercial.
No, it used to be, it used to be in the, uh, the old B-zone, which is commercial, uh, but now it's not in any commercial zone.
Okay.
Well, I think the, the, the issue is that he can't stay in whatever, the zone that he used to be in is no longer a defined zone in our borough. So he has to become something other than what he is today.
Exactly.
That's why he got a letter. He does have to be rezoned, but I don't think we've said what he's going to be rezoned to yet. It's just that he can't stay in the zone he's in, because that zone won't exist going forward.
Right.
Oh, I don't think that's true, though. He, he's in one of the new affordable housing zones.
I, and, and.
Right now, Jack?
Yes. Yeah.
We did that in 2018 or 2019, whenever we, we implemented the fair share plan.
Okay, so then maybe the map we were looking on, the map on page 5, looks like it's out of date then?
Right, and that, that was my suggestion this morning, that all these AH zones, uh, be included in this new zoning map.
Yeah, because that we're not, what we're seeing here on this map on page 5 implies that it's in the OB zone.
Correct.
We're great. Jack, you're telling us that's not correct, it's in AH3 or something?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
I mean, we'll confirm that before the next meeting, but that's.
So then he won't be, so his zone won't be changing would be the, the more accurate answer then, um. To the.
So we really don't have to worry about it.
That's truly, yeah, okay. Well, that's, that's a good resolution of that particular question.
Yes.
I mean, the zoning map does show that's the OB zone, the zoning map from our website.
It's an old.
OB office. It's the one that's on our website now.
Well, you know why? Be- because the zoning map itself is not always updated, it's done through narrative, a- and then when there's enough to, to clean up the zoning map itself. But what happens is in those affordable housing zones, i- it stated that that lot was rezoned as the new R.
AH1.
AH1.
Okay, that answers that question, yeah. So can we go back to page 6? Um, and you can see, these down, um, on Mine Brook Past Woodland is where those seven houses are that, um, the neighbors are concerned about.
Right.
Which is the, just the other side of, um, where there's a little, little offices, and I guess, is the firehouse there too? Yeah.
So I'll bring that up directly to Keith when I speak to him next.
I don't think it matters to whether it's in or out, so, um, see what the planner thinks, but you know, if, we don't have to do that section.
Well, I, I agree, Mayor, uh, but I guess what I would, what I would wonder about is whether or not if our experts can talk to the homeowners, um, and the homeowners, after talking to the experts, see a benefit to what we're doing, then maybe they would be supportive of it. If they continue to have their same position, I, I take their input for what it's worth, and, and I agree with your perspective, we're not, we're not obligated to do it this way.
I agree with you.
They're all changing from R4.
Right.
If I'm right, Jeff, R4.
Yes, you're right. Uh, the DC, the downtown core.
Yes, which would, which would make their setbacks different.
Yes.
And less stringent. In other words, they can build on more of the property if they wanted to.
Eighty percent, yes.
But the problem is, if they want to expand their residential use, they would have to go to the board.
Yeah.
And als- and also then the new standards would apply.
That, that.
Explain that again, Jack, because I, I mean, I, I thought if they remain residential, basically all the old residential rules apply, nothing more. No.
If they remain residential, they're non-conforming use, which is grandfathered, so they can keep that use, they can't expand it or intensify it, because non-conforming uses are disfavored in the law. So if, in fact, it's rezoned commercial, they want to maintain that as a residence and they want to add a, you know, a family room off the back, they would have to go to the board, even if they make the setback requirements.
And is that different than if it stays R4, would they have to go to the board to get a family room put in the back?
Only if they needed both variances, but as far as the use, they would not.
I see. So it does, it does.
They'd have to go get a use variance, which as you know, requires an enhanced burden of proof, so they'd need, they'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment and get five votes in order to expand or, or intensify the residential use, if it's rezoned commercial.
Which is an additional burden over what they would have if it just stays R4, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, we have a similar area, if I'm right, Jeff, just correct me if I'm wrong, on Claremont Road, across from the tavern, where there are residential homes that are in a business district right now, right, and they're not in this new map.
Um, I think they are on, on this new map.
Oh, okay.
The library, right?
Where the arrow is. No, we're talking about Claremont Tavern?
Yeah, across from Tavern, it goes up past.
Right, you can, you can see.
Yes, I see the arrow.
Can you see the ball field on Park Lane? So they're just a little bit, they're just a little bit above that.
Right.
Well, beyond.
It looks like Chris, Christine, they're already, those are already in a B1 district.
They are.
Correct, so what I'm saying is, like, this isn't the first time where a person who lived in a home that was residential got rezoned to be, or was it the other way around? Did somebody go into a business district and build a house, like?
I don't know the history.
Yeah.
Jeff Price, do you know the history?
Yeah, that, no, I don't. I know all those houses are not particularly new, except the, uh, the two new condos that went in across from, uh, the Claremont Tavern, and they had to go to the board.
Right, yeah.
Because those were residential properties going into a B1 district at the time?
Correct, and they were having residential use on the first floor, which is not permitted in, in the current zone. Once this changes to the downtown zones, it would now be permitted.
We didn't hear from any of those, uh, residents, did we?
No.
I don't know that we, I don't know that we sent letters, because I think it was one business district changing to another business district. It wasn't the same as these other scenarios, uh, we, I think we, we sent letters regarding.
Right.
And Jeff, you know, in the new downtown core, um, residential multifamily, residential townhomes, and so residential has permitted use.
Yes, in the new zones, correct.
Yes.
So then all the new zones, D, uh, DC, DCO, DCG, and DCL, residential is permitted in all those zones?
I'm talking about the, I'm looking at the DC Core right now, Tom, um, each one is, each one is slightly different.
Right, so my question was, and, and, uh, our residential, does it, all four of these residential is allowed, is that, is that correct?
They're all allowed on the first floor now, yes.
Yeah, yes, okay.
And above. Yeah, the, the other, the other point I brought up last week was the library, and I requested that the library be put back in the downtown core.
What's the decision?
Uh, though I have, so, um, Mr. Sabo's been in court, so I have not had the opportunities. I think it's ours, our decision.
Well, and I think, uh, was it, um, Jack, didn't you have an opinion on that, because even though it's, we rent the downstairs, it's still borough property and wouldn't really be considered, um, commercial?
Yes.
Yeah, you gave us an opinion.
Right, but we, I think we were asking was, was it, because it, it appeared at one time as part of the downtown core, and then it appeared on another version, not in. So we were unsure whether or not it was just a, a, you know, type of graphical error, or if it was intentional, and what the logic was on the intention, assuming it was intentional. So I think that's the explanation we're looking for.
Right.
I can't explain that, but with respect to if it's changed into a public zone, uh, it won't really affect it the same way it would affect the houses on Mine Brook, because none of those, there's not going to be any expansion or intensification of the uses in the lower level of the library. So it really doesn't matter to them as a practical matter.
Uh, if you go back to page 5, Anthony, what is it, what, what zone is this library in now? It's in a commercial zone now, that's, that's my point. Why would we take it out of the commercial zone? What's the logic for that? And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Good question.
Yeah, and, and you'll notice on this map that, that the zone line goes past the library, jumps across Anderson Hill in a straight line, and then turns up, uh, Claremont. Now, if you go back to the other map, Anthony.
So did they leave out that medical building?
You'll see the, there's a little bump there in, in this, in this map.
Yeah.
Wasn't there before, so there's, there's inconsistencies between the two maps.
I think that little bump there, if I'm remembering correctly, Jeff, from a separate conversation we were having, is borough, borough property, isn't it?
It's open space, wasn't it?
I think it was, wasn't it, Mayor?
Yes.
Behind the, uh, the one building leading up to the, the field was a little piece of open space.
Yes, so. Behind the Mill Street area is, is, is absolutely, is open space.
So that may be why that little bump out's there now.
Right, that little cutout. I think we didn't realize that that was open space, but it is.
Right, it's just a, you know, I just want to see the maps consistent, and that's, it's not, nobody's error, it's just.
Yeah.
It just needs to be done.
Chad, that's on your list to ask about the library, right?
Yes, yes, it's already been sent to John.
Okay.
We might as well ask about the bump out too then, I guess.
Okay.
This little thing up here, and, um,
and.
And, uh, Tom, you had suggested that the residents along Mine Brook talk to, uh, Keith, is that who you're, when you say?
Oh, I, I mean, I, I think what I heard was that, you know, we, we were going to have experts discuss what the, what the purpose or what the forethought was for having this section be part of the downtown, downtown core, DC, downtown core zone, um, and that if, you know, that there were enough benefits to it. I, I don't actually know what to, to answer, when the, you know, the public comes in and says, I have a concern about being a commercial zone, I can understand that. On the face of it, it does sound like it might be something that's intimidating, but are there, you know, unbeknownst to me, are there benefits for the, for them going that way? And if so, you know, are they, have we explained fully what the benefits might be, if they exist? Now, if the negatives outweigh the benefits, they may still feel that, you know, they, their position, as previously stated tonight, remains. On the other hand, if, if there's an expert that we have that can help them understand, uh, whatever potential benefits may exist, it would be up to them, they may decide to change their minds. Uh, that's all I was asking, was, you know, do we have somebody who can help explain, you know, what the pluses and minuses are? I think, uh, Jack referred to one earlier today, which I, I think I would count on the list of minuses, which is that an expanded, uh, you know, a, uh,
Yeah.
You call it, uh, approved non-conforming use that's expanded or intensified, has to go through an additional level of approval to get it. So if somebody wanted to put a family room on the back of their house, they might be in, in a slightly more, uh, disadvantageous position than previously. And so I think that's relevant discussion, other, I'm just wondering if there's things that are on the opposite, the flip side of that, that says, oh, but also, by the way, there's these other things you could think of.
Yeah.
I mean, the one that's obvious to me, and obviously I have no proof, but there could.
Whether he or Keith can give us maybe a list of pros and cons, or how that affects those residents?
Yeah, I've already sent the, the note to, to, uh, to Keith.
Okay, good, yeah.
Yeah, and Keith, and Keith will be at the next meeting, I had to confirm that with him this morning.
Right, okay.
And I think that's my point, is just to have, you know, have the right people be able to give them all the information. When they have all the information, they can restate their current positions that they have today, or they can change their minds if they so feel that that's to their benefit. Um, and then we'll have their final input after they have all the information, and we can make an informed decision as a council.
Yeah, I completely concur with that.
What, what would be the benefit to the borough? I heard Jeff Price talk about consistency for enforcement, and the mayor mentioned that some developer 50 years from now might want to do something, but those don't seem like compelling reasons, um, at least not to me. Uh, what, what, what is the benefit to the borough? Jeff Horowitz, you, did you want to say something? You got, you were waving your hand there.
Yeah, the, the thought was, um, that that strip was the entrance to the commercial part of town, and that over the years, that was probably convert to, be desirable to be diverted, uh, converted to commercial property. And that the, um, conversion at this time probably didn't do the homeowners that much, um, harm, and in fact, might have even increased the, uh, sellability of their property, because it might be a track, it opened up its tractability, not only the, its continued residential use, but potentially commercial use, particularly if, um, one or more of the properties was sold, uh, as a group. So the thought was that it, it was consistent with what we were trying to do with the design of downtown, and it didn't really do any harm for the residents. And, you know, it's, it's out there at the end of the side, at the end of the town, and it's not, um, crucial to the, the view that the, when we were drafting the zoning ordinance, the, the, the revisioning of downtown, but we thought it was consistent with what we were doing.
Good.
So that's, that's my. So that's, that's my point of the, you know, presenting that information and perspective to the to the existing homeowners, and, you know, that may, that may not change their minds whatsoever. On the other hand, you know, after further consideration, maybe that that is a a plus that they see. And obviously, that's not for us to tell them it's a positive, it's for us to explain what the differences are, and for them to determine if they think it's a positive or not.
So, can I ask one last question? Just in case Chad can bring us to them too, or maybe Jeff knows the answer. On page one ninety-nine, it talks about parking. And for example, if you are gonna have a artisan manufacturing, it's one, one parking space per thousand square feet. So that would apply to anything in the downtown district. So for one of these homes, let's say, to sell to someone who's going to turn it into some type of artisan manufacturing, they would need to have the parking requirements too, correct?
Well, so the new, the new developer would have to, would have to take care of that requirement.
Yeah, there's also, there's also a clause in there that if those parking within so many feet, is it six hundred feet?
Six hundred feet.
Yes.
Quite a distance, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a couple of other areas in town where, right now, we have split zone lots. Uh, what does that mean? That means that part of the lot is in a commercial zone, the other part is in a, in a residential zone. So I've requested that John Sabo review those and see if we can fix that issue. One in particular is the Galway Crane Funeral Home. And that is one lot with the funeral home, and then they've just subdivided and made the single-family dwelling a residential zone. And I've asked him to move the lot line to be coincident with the zone line. So the whole funeral home is in the commercial zone, and the residential property is in the residential zone. And the same with the Lakeland Bank and the Verizon Building down the other end of town. The back of the Lakeland Bank is all in the residential zone. And the back of the Verizon Building is the residential zone. So I've requested that he moves the lot line, uh, moves the zone line, so it matches the lot lines.
Does that answer the essence of your question?
That makes sense. Yeah.
Kind of, yep.
I've not, I've not received an answer yet, but I think we'll be talking to John in the next couple of days.
Yes, we will. I just, while we're speaking, I asked him when he was getting out of quirks, and the last part of the last week, he was tied up.
Okay.
Okay, so we will have Keith at the next meeting, you said, so.
I've already scheduled him at the next meeting, yes.
Okay. So we can have him available to answer questions too.
And continue the discussion. This is the whole purpose, to make sure that we answer and discuss all these questions before we move anything forward.
Okay, um, can we move on to six E? This is, oh, no, six D is the two seventy-one Mine Brook subdivision. Doug had given us some back information on this. I guess our engineer has done the proposed subdivision. So, um, and did Public Works review this yet, or you're going to?
We did not.
Okay, um, because this thing, this is kind of under a time crunch to get this.
What does Public Works review for?
Uh, the subdivision of two seventy-one Mine Brook.
But what, what feedback are you looking for from Public Works?
I don't know. That's just what Doug's email says, that he was gonna, he had it on the agenda for Public Works.
I think there was something about checking with NJ DOT or something, wasn't there?
Well, I think the, the problem I had with Bob Brightley's review is that he's proposing this whole widening of the driveway and a stormwater thing, and I think what we discussed was just a right-of-way for the driveway.
Yeah. Definitely.
I, I spoke to Bob and resolved most of these issues. He raised an email and explained, we're just looking for a minor subdivision at this point in time.
Yeah.
Okay, because this.
But, but the one, we will make an access permit from DOT in any event for the change of use.
Right. But as part of the subdivision, it says that we have a, what, perpetual easement or something to come in the driveway?
Yeah, that's, that's what we'll have. As, when it's filed.
So what is, what's the next step on this, Jack? We just have to get the approval from DOT, is send them this subdivision plan and get their approval?
Yep.
Okay, so we don't need to wait for a meeting of Public Works? Because I really would like to get this moving, because we wanted to have this done before the end of the year?
Yeah, let's move it as quickly as is reasonably possible.
Yep, I will get that off tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, um, now we're up to the JIF renewal. Anthony, what do you need from us on this?
There's also a resolution and an agreement in the packet. It would just be if you wanted to renew the JIF, uh, we need to pass that resolution, and and they provided a little more information. Uh, there's a letter with some comparisons of different uh, JIFs and alternatives. So it would be just adopting a resolution to renew, if that's the, if that's what you want to do.
Uh, council, are we good with renewing?
I am.
I am as well.
Yeah, I guess so.
So then are we, are we doing this now, or do you want to do it at the next meeting?
We could do it now. I just, just give the next number, number two, 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 or it's, it's up to you. If you want to do it now or at the next meeting, I can have it for the next meeting. Either way.
I, I mean, based on the conversations we had previously, I know, I know there was some sort of deadline for this, and I don't think.
December thirty-first.
Yeah, we have.
I don't think we need to leave it to the last minute. I think we might as well, if we're in agreement that we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think at the last council meeting, the, the question was whether there were other alternatives that were better. I, I don't see that in, in the packet that we got, so I don't see any reason to delay.
Okay, so.
So I move to, uh.
Which, which the number?
To. To.
Two, two, two.
Two, two, okay. You can just say.
Renew. Yeah, I, I move resolution number two, 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 renewing the membership in the suburban municipal joint insurance fund, AKA the JIF.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Mara?
Yes.
Okay, so that's done. Um, the daylighting drainage ordinance, this came from Doug Walker. And it's from Public Works. Christine, you want to just talk about that? It's the creation of an ordinance that homeowners are not permitted to daylight gutter, leader, and sump pump drainage closer than ten feet from a curb line or edge of pavement. Um, the thought being that this ten-foot buffer of lawn area will absorb most of the stormwater before it gets to the roadway. Um, yeah, and I don't know, Jack, would this uh, fall under a stormwater management ordinance?
It's not stormwater, no.
It's not.
Just for my adification, what exactly is daylight draining?
Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't sure either.
That means the pipe comes out above ground.
Yeah.
We had a similar issue last year. There was a resident who, across the street, the resident was it was winter time, and their sump pump was drained to the street, and it would freeze, and it was causing a major icing danger in front of their house, where they had a child who was disabled and a caregiver who wasn't able to get in. So when you send your, you, you know, your basin floods, you pump it out into the street without something to absorb it, you're causing a major hazard to other people. So I guess this is expanding on that, because I thought we already passed ordinance about that.
We did, we, we did it just last year, I think it was.
Very recent, it was last winter, I remember.
Yeah, it was twenty nineteen, ordinance twenty nineteen, seventeen ninety-three. And, but what it says is that there shall be no diversions of stormwater directly in any borough street or sidewalk between December one and March fifteen. In the professional opinion of the borough engineer or the chief of police, whether it does mean that said discharge would create any unsafe conditions such as icing or flooding.
So, isn't this the same?
Yeah.
Well, this one, this one requires that the pipe end can feed before the street, but
Yeah.
I, I don't know that the, the ordinance we just adopted last year is not working. I can't tell.
Well, it certainly requires a lot more oversight and discretion, the way it's written in the prior ordinance.
Well, that was the intent, though. Because, you know, just to crack down on those that are actually creating safety violations as opposed to safety.
Doing a blanket change.
Right.
Well, this was more than just safety. The one, the, what I read about six F was that it was also to prevent any, any degradation of the roadway. Uh, so it was more than just safety, it was engineering.
Well, yeah, and it's also stormwater management as well, I think. But the one we, the one we passed last year doesn't allow it at all. This is giving them ten feet?
Oh, no, it, it allows you to do it unless you're creating an unsafe condition.
Ah, okay.
And that decision, that decision was left up to the chief of police or the, the Public Works manager. Or the borough engineer, I'm sorry.
So, but that pretty much covers what this is saying.
Yeah.
That, that was the intent, was to, to eliminate, you know, the dangerous conditions that were created in the winter time.
Yeah.
And, you know, in, in light of a long conversation, can we just get clarification from Doug as to what additional language he needs in the ordinance?
Yeah, why?
That isn't there now?
What's already there?
Because the, the concern in twenty nineteen, and the reason it was narrowly drawn like that, was people were concerned it would really be disruptive to people, because a lot of people have, you know, do drain into the, the storm drain system, and it's not creating a problem. So rather than making everybody you know, redo their, their system, it would just solve the problem, as opposed to being, you know, a blanket prohibition.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, this, this came up last year when there was a flooding of hard scrabble just by Washington Corner Row.
That's right.
Where there was a sump pump that was dumping out onto hard scrabble and caused an incredible icing condition, and I think there was a, a traffic accident up there. And, and that perpetuated the ordinance that Jack just referred to.
Okay, so unless Doug, you know, maybe, Christine, you want to take that back to Doug and see why he thinks the old ordinance isn't, or what the, what the reasoning is behind that? Because as of right now, we do have some protection.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be worth just reminding him what the old ordinance says as well.
Yeah, um, now we're up to the class of twenty twenty garden. Um, I saw Carrie here. Uh, Carrie, you want to say a few words on this? I know you sent us a.
Yes, I'd love to. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for fitting us in to give you an update on the twenty twenty garden. Uh, I did send you a cover letter and a plan, and I wanted to let you know how that came about and see how we move forward from this point on this, on this garden. We had received back in May kind permission from the council to erect a garden at the triangle at Childsworth and Alcott. Uh, and when I put it on the bubble and sent it to the school board at BHS, or I think it was through the school board, yeah, there, there was great acclaim. As a matter of fact, I had more likes than I've ever had on anything I've ever posted before. Just a lot of people were very excited about it, because it was, you know, it's been a difficult time for everybody, and to have something positive to focus on, I think, really struck a chord with people. Uh, we got a small subcommittee together of people interested in design and also installation. People were putting up their hands to help Girl Scout leaders. Um, we have a feature at BHS. We have a lot of green thumbs that were involved, and we were conducting meetings at the site, where we felt like we wanted to see if we could entice some professionals to help us out, because it is a tricky site. There's, there's a lot of sun, as it turns out. I thought it would be shadier than it was, but it, it's sunny, it's dry, and there's large trees and large roots. So Peter Burnbaum reached out to Bozenberg and Associates. Brian has retired, but there's great people that are still working there and really benefiting from his terrific name and reputation as they move forward with their careers. And much to our surprise, when we asked for just a plant list of things that would be appropriate for this challenging site, and that would also be deer resistant, they came back and met with us and unfolded the amazing plan that you see that we have shared with you, uh, which really got us thinking, if we, we could do something small, but why don't we see if we could do something a little bit bigger for this special circumstance and special class? So what we knew was different than what we had said before, so we came back to talk to you all and see what would be the mechanism for getting started on this and getting it done, recognizing that we won't be able to fund it among EC members alone, but thinking that we could use the new funding mechanism that Leslie told me about. As soon as I had people putting up their hands and saying that they wanted to help, and they wanted to contribute, and they have three graduates in three different schools that they wanted to honor, uh, Leslie said, let's wait until we get this funding mechanism in place, and then we'll be able to answer. So don't take anything now. And I was like, okay, back off on that. Let's go and wait for that to happen. I understand that that's in place. So want to know what your thoughts are, um, want to know what, what you think about the plan of moving forward, testing out this new mechanism for funding and finding a way for people to participate and get involved so that we can go forward as we planned and as we promised, have something coming up next spring. So that would be something we need to plant this fall. Uh, with a little help from Public Works, we could prepare the ground, get started with the daffodils and the bulbs and the shrubs, all of which, that's what Bozenberg felt we should start. We're confident that we can get the money to do that piece, and then move forward stage by stage um, to do whatever the council would like to see on the site. And so that's why we're back to you today to, you know, express our excitement about it and our hope that you'll agree with us that we should, we should go for this reach plan.
Oh, Carrie, do you have a, with that plan? Is there, is there a goal reaching for, for donation?
I think Peter could probably talk a, a little bit about like what he thinks the initial cost will be. We, we stopped asking Bozenberg for the total cost of what they thought this plan would be, because they had already been so generous, we didn't want to, we didn't want to push them too hard, but they were very welcoming in terms of coming back. We said, let's, let's just see, before we put a lot more work into it, what the council's response is. Um, but I think Peter was going to get a couple of basic numbers together about this initial, initial thought for the daffodils, the bulbs, and the not, I don't know how many shrubs, I forget.
Carrie, yes, I did that, and, I mean, basically, what we said from the very beginning is we break it down into sections, so that can be whoops, multiple phases, and of course, he didn't bark all night. So we've done phases, and the planting in the front nose where the two streets come together would be the, the area that we would do first, where there's mostly bulbs and some bleeding hearts and perhaps a few other things. So we'd have a, it wouldn't be fractured, it wouldn't be fragmented the way we'd go about doing it, and and that's what, in fact, they, you know, wholeheartedly agree with. So I, I mean, looking at some of the wholesale prices I get access to, we're probably between in the twelve hundred dollar range, I think for the bulbs, the Virginia Bluebells, some of the hookah, um, and even a couple of the shrubs, I think we might have to modify the list that you've put together here, Carrie, but basically, that's pretty much it. If we get a little support from basically, that's um pretty much it, if we get a little support uh from uh John McDowell to sort of dig up the ground a bit and add some fresh soil. That would make it go pretty easily and just the volunteers, I think, could handle it pretty, pretty well. And then next spring, we would have a really nice long display of uh narcissus and the um bluebells and a few other things, certainly take us into the summer and be a sort of a welcome site since um this uh school year isn't looking a heck of a lot better than than the last one so far. Planting now, of course, is important, we need to pretty much do it uh by around the first of November. Is the best time so that they have a few weeks to uh set their roots and and come up in the spring.
Peter, Peter or Carrie, have you, has anybody shared any of this with John McDowell before we start volunteering in his department?
Yes.
Yes, we have, we we did send the plan to John and he he opined, he said, yes, it is indeed, it is more ambitious than what you had originally talked about. Uh, but his only real concern was upkeep and particularly, he said watering. To which we were able to answer that the next door neighbor already said we could use their hose.
Well, you know, that that was actually gonna be my point, thi- this has really grown far beyond what was originally proposed, which was a park, not a garden. And when I saw your plan, which is beautiful, looks like Buck Gardens, actually. It's, I was concerned about maintenance and um you know, that next door neighbor may or may not volunteer the hose and that may or may not be the next door neighbor next year or the year after.
Anthony, can you put the picture up just so the public can see what the design looks like?
I'm very concerned about maintenance and and I don't want any added cost, this was supposed to be pretty passive.
Well, actually, it is very passive, um and again, we can do it in phases and and the plant selection are all natives except for the the daffodils, but they're very passive, they don't really require much either. And the beauty of it is that these plants are uh indigenous to our area. They don't really get much in the way of diseases, they don't grow crazy out of in wild, uh most of the selections are actually dwarf and compact species, so it actually stays very, very compact.
I have no doubt that you've picked wonderful plants, but.
I I didn't pick them, um, the professionals picked them.
Well, I consider you a professional too, but uh the point is, is that we we, you know, the idea, at least I thought, was that we were gonna put something in a place that was not dependent upon borough support. And that's not what I'm hearing, though.
Well, um, I've already been in touch with John and I'm very much aware of uh a lot of things get started and and end up being different and John ends up uh uh holding the bag, so to speak, and that's clearly that's something that uh we would like to do, we'd like to make this beneficial all the way around um and a and attractive place uh in that neighborhood, so the people walk by, they feel uh happy to be there as well as the students at the school and it'll be somewhat enduring, we don't have to complete the whole plan. What they did is they came back with a plan because we're concerned that if we didn't have a lot of structure and definition, then it, that's gets very unruly and and looks unkempt, so the uh plan is very compact. It's got many elements which we don't have to do, um but doing the nose at this stage um is primarily what we did uh discuss the first time, which is, you know, put a nice bunch of flowers and that uh vacant uh empty space and whether we do the rest of it, uh that's certainly up in the air, but we have a structure uh and and in a way to do it, um should we decide to go to those next steps.
So Jeff, I I share some of the your your sediment here, it's not that I'm opposed to it, I wanna make sure we fully think through, this is a pretty prominent place in town, what what's designed here is beautiful. And if we're putting something that's beautiful in place, we need to make sure it main, it gets maintained as the same, it doesn't become unyielding.
Well, if you take a look at the at the plan and you look um at the at the at the nose of it, so to speak, you'll see there's like two tiers. Um, there, there's um, there's narcissus, if you look at the the details, there's some uh hookah perennial bulb mix, that is is really the area that we first talked about doing the planting, everything else behind it. You know, think of that as optional, uh but just doing the front section. Uh, what's the pan shade, is, you know, that would just be a beautification of that approach from that island, and you could leave the rest grass uh and and everything else, uh should you decide to do that. The area that we'd like to focus on is just those first two tiers.
You point the cursor to what we're talking about?
What what are the first two tiers?
Well, uh, I, can I point, Anthony?
I can make you a co-host and and you can. Try it if you can, I'll 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 try as best as I can to do.
You're just telling them to move right or left.
The nose, it's the nose is where Peter's focusing on, yeah.
And here, right, those first two tiers. So uh from the nose here, from the sidewalk where you see the bit, right, the only that little section.
Okay.
Do you, Peter, do you mean, you mean the entire area up to to the proposed steps? Or where would you stop it?
That would take us well beyond, Carrie, what we've been talking about so far, so it would be that nose place and you see there's a tree in there. So basically up to and around the tree a little bit.
The black spot is the tree.
The black spot's the tree, exactly, that's right.
It's an enormous tree and we are gonna work around that.
And from a maintenance point of view, um, these are ground cover plants that keep out a lot of weeds. And um, you know, you'd be mowing up to the back of it, uh as it is, has been today.
If I hear correctly, we're talking about twelve hundred dollars of work, uh some of which might be funded through donations. And it's it's low or zero maintenance after the fir-, it needs to be watered when it's first planted, but after that, it's gonna survive on its own?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, then, I mean, I think, you know, if we think about this in phases, I don't think it harms us to have, you know, a longer term you know, robust plan that that's fairly extensive and maybe more expensive but only approve phase one of it at this point and evaluate, I mean, it makes sense that it has it 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 doesn't have to get torn up in the future to have something beautiful in this spot, it it can be built upon year over year uh as funds or interest and or donations are available.
Yes.
Now it's it's grass and we're maintaining it, right?
Uh, yes, in a very broad sense, yes, yes, that's correct.
I mean, that's where the people mowing it anyway at the moment, so and doing. Be done, so.
Yes, we would seek, we're we're not asking the borough for money, we wanna see what what we can do on our own based on the amount of uh ex- excitement and enthusiasm we had about it to begin with.
Yeah.
We've got the people to plant and we think we can get the donations to get this first section that Peter's talking about done on our own, uh we will make sure that they get properly planted, we do need help um which we did talk about before, from um Public Works to to get us a little bit of soil and dig it up a little bit because it's it's gonna be rudy, it's a very large tree that is uh in that position there, and so we need, you know, just a little bit of preparation work done and then uh we'll we'll take it from there. My other other concern is just to make sure we have a place to put the money and how, what's the mechanism for collecting it?
So let me propose this, cuz I I've I've proposed to the personnel committee multiple times that um if there's work to be done based on some of the council's past that isn't anticipated and can't be done that, you know, Ralph, through the mechanisms through his department, let us know. It sounds like um Carrie has already talked to to John, uh if they have an issue from a maintenance perspective, that I I would feel that they would have to let us know, correct?
I would hope so.
Yeah.
So I mean, I mean, look, if if they're funding this themselves, there's no question in my mind, this is making the property better. Um, my concern is maintenance and it's John's job to make sure that he's monitoring what he can do and what his department can and cannot do, right?
Yeah, so I'm happy to take this up in our next Public Works meeting, make sure this is not a maintenance burden for the borough and if it isn't, then maybe we move it forward at the next meeting, is that what we're saying?
That I, that's my thought, Tom.
All right, I'm I'm happy to bring it up in our next Public Works meeting.
The um.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to interrupt you, Peter, uh it would be helpful, Carrie and Peter, if you could show us like an uh a red lined drawing showing what's the phase that we're talking about here. Yeah.
Uh, we do have the time pressure of ordering material, um and just so that you're aware of that.
Is our next September meeting, I mean, this is by resolution, Mayor, that we would approve this?
We're not paying for it, do we need to do a resolution?
Well, I think it was the funding mechanism thing that Ralph and Leslie would have to set up.
I think that's been set up already, I thought you you already approved a trust thing. And I just wanna underscore that um the Environmental Commission has already through donations of the, by them for the, some of the bulbs and for the sign, the sign is already.
When did we approve the trust?
Uh, that was a resolution, that's good.
Ralph, were you there? Did we do that? Do you remember?
I might have the resolution.
I know we've uh done that, we did the trust before for um.
We did the trust for the banners, and it's easy to do.
Yeah.
Environmental Commission.
I thought we did that.
We did, we we have that, if I can just find the number of the resolution, I should have had it out. Um, I I just wanna underscore a few things that my colleagues have said, um, this can be done in stages and this garden was intended to be self-sustaining, of course, the first year or two it is not. And as Ca- as Carrie already showed, we have some enthusiasm of why we would even present such a an extensive garden with people that might donate and the cost of it is difficult to pinpoint because we're gonna do it in stages and it really depends upon what materials are available at any given time, so it's not an exact thing. Uh, but we recognize that this will be done in stages according to the money that our community is interested in donating.
So uh Jack, do anything officially, uh let them move forward with this?
I would, I would do a motion authorizing to move forward, just so it's in the record, it is borough property.
I think we actually already got that um approval quite some time ago and then when we went out and started looking at it looking for a structure and something of a fission for a future, you know, Bozenberg came back with, you know, a pretty amazing plan, so.
Well, I think this is more extensive and you've got DPW involved to some extent, I just don't think it would hurt.
And that's why we wanted to share it, absolutely, yes.
The resolution is twenty dash one fifty-three and it's from May twenty-sixth.
That set up the trust, set up the trust?
It says a resolution requesting permission for the dedication by rider for the acceptance of requests and gifts as required by New Jersey state for use by the Environmental Commission.
So we did set up the trust already, you're right.
May twenty-sixth.
A a a quick question, Carrie, you you would, when you made your original presentation, you said something about a there was gonna be a plaque recognizing the class of twenty twenty, where 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 is that gonna be, is that on the bench that you proposed or where is it gonna be?
Well, we, at the time, we did not, we didn't, we weren't proposing a bench. It's a, a actually, it's very movable, so uh we did, it's a lovely plaque, um if I could screen share, which I think to like jump in and try to do that is not gonna work, I I I just didn't even know if I could find it within my emails, but we went, did go ahead, we collected funds amongst ourselves because the mayor wanted to have a plaque and the council wanted to have a plaque, we've already got that waiting, it just has a stake on the bottom. As as the garden grows, we can move it to the appropriate uh spot.
Yeah, because I mean, that definitely should be part of phase one.
It's ready and waiting, it's ready and waiting so that everybody knows and that would probably help us to um get some more gifts, but the fact that we had such professional interest that we got this very involved plan with soil amendment plans and this and that, that we can use or not, you know, as as we are able uh within our um our curve. We might be able to get landscapers that have kids and they might wanna do the steps if we go to that, once we get to that position.
And the beauty, the beauty is that with a plan like this, it's much easier to get people to sign on and donate money than just having, well, we wanna plant, you know, a few hundred bulbs, uh you know, on the corner, so we're hoping that this would, you know, be somewhat of a of a nuclear uh uh focus.
Once we know exactly what the mechanism should be that's legal and proper, whether it be checks, whether uh an individual can step up and form a GoFundMe and then transfer the money into Leslie's hands for for the Environmental Commission Trust just as long as we know, so we can tell people when we go to the bubble to say, here's the plan, um, this is so we wanted to get the the wheels turning on that to make sure that we would know when we're ready to.
Okay, well, I could just tell you, having done this uh for the veterans banners, uh at least at that time, uh Leslie had advised us um and I think Jack Pigeon did as well, that the money needs, should go directly to the borough, there shouldn't be a third party in between uh uh for the passage of the money, so it's better for people to write checks to the trust rather than a GoFundMe or something like that.
We, yeah, we were going back and forth with Jack and he was, he was trying to help by saying, couldn't you, you know, uh use the Friends for Green or Bernardsville and set up, work through their five oh one C three cuz they can use a GoFundMe and have with some success last year for sure. Um, but we didn't wanna set up a separate five oh one C three and we don't wanna uh impose upon their work and their ability to fundraise, so maybe the checks, although they are more difficult for um people to go and find their checkbook and do than pushing a button, maybe that's our our safest alternative, we just.
So what you need from us today is just approval to get started?
With the, with the first uh, just the front of it.
Okay, is everybody all right with that, if we have any issues starting the first phase?
Are we gonna make a motion? I thought I heard Jack say we should make a motion. So I I move that we start with phase one of this project that's being self-funded with minimal support from our DPW uh for some primarily digging and um some topsoil, uh which I think was the sole request from the borough. Uh, and that we do phase one as discussed tonight, up to the the first tree there at the tip of the uh property. And uh I move that we approve that tonight.
I second.
Sorry, I, can can we make it just pending confirmation from John? Can we go through with the voting and everything and then just pending confirmation from John for for the?
Jack Pigeon, can we do that, say pending a email confirmation from, that it's not gonna be a maintenance uh burden?
Yes.
Okay, so I move, I make that same motion pending confirmation by email from uh John McDowell that it won't be an ongoing maintenance burden. Excessive burden on the borough.
And that we expect maintenance.
Pardon me?
I second.
Yeah, second.
Um, so we need a roll call?
Voice vote is good.
Resolution?
That's good enough.
Voice vote is good.
Okay.
So a quick question, Ca- Carrie and Joanna, um parts of the lower part of that property, I I go by there frequently, uh ride my bike, walk my dog, um it gets pretty wet, is there a rain garden plant in there, buddy, and all that drawing, or no?
My goodness, we haven't seen any wet conditions in all our visitations, um but I I believe you.
Plants are are suitable for that condition.
Yes.
We're gonna try to stay away from the very lowest part because that's where the curb is cut and John wants to make sure he can get his maintenance vehicles in there. Certainly, phase one will have no, absolutely no impact there and Peter will will draw a red line and we'll we'll talk to John.
Most of these plants are are recommended for rain gardens.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the least attractive part of that property is actually that lower part along uh Charlesworth uh that faces into the the high school ball field, uh so hopefully you'll get to that someday.
We'll send you a note when uh we're doing the planting.
That's right.
Thanks for.
Everybody.
Work on this, really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, next we have the draft resolution, um regarding uh Jersey Central Power and Light, um Jeff got us a copy of the one that um is it East Ten, that Morris Plains did?
Oh, I, yeah, actually, you know, following up on something that we talked about in the fore when I wanted to actually sue JCP and L and that's that's still probably in the works, but in the interim, um uh there's been a number of resolutions uh at the borough, municipality, county levels uh throughout the state because of people's justifiable anger with uh JCP and L's performance. Um, and I came across, uh a resolution was passed just recently uh in Morris Plains and they had actually done some really good due diligence, getting a whole number of uh resolutions from across the state and then distilling them and I I liked their language and modified it just a little bit so that it was more applicable to uh Bernardsville. And uh emphasized the. And emphasized the aspects of the, of the storm that impacted Burnsville the most. And the salient features, I mean, you could pass an ordinance showing your righteous indignation, but that doesn't change anything. The good thing about this ordinance, the language it includes, is it actually had some action items for the BPU, the Board of Public Utilities, that we petitioned them to conduct an audit of JCP&L's performance and preparation, but that the audit would be done by something external to the BPU because people have also lost faith, faith in the BPU. It also asked for a reevaluation of the vegetation management. Currently, the BPU only requires JCP&L and PSENG to do tree maintenance every four years. And that's really not adequate for an area such as ours, I believe. And then lastly, JCP&L has already requested a rate increase of 7.8%. And, and, you know, you know, that's their game. They're going to say, well, we, you know, we had all these problems and we can fix it, but we need more money. And, and they did that after Sandy as well. This asks the BPU to deny that rate request and let them fix their problems based on the revenues that they've already had. So I put this forward and hopefully the council will agree with this resolution on behalf of the borough.
Anthony, there were just two, I think, when you converted it to Word, there's two Morises in there that have to be changed to Somerset. I saw as I read through it, where it says county, you know, a couple of county ofs.
Thanks for putting the time and effort into this, Dr. Hammond. On a separate, but similar, you know, same thing, are we, are we moving forward with extending or the ability to extend PSENG in the borough?
Well, that would be another thing to petition the BPU to do. And that's, that's another, another item. In fact, we could even add it to this resolution, asking from the, do that. And PSENG is, encroaches on our catchment area. They, Warren and Watshong are split. Part of their municipality is PSENG and part of their municipality is JCP&L. And I've spoken to the governing bodies, the mayors and the administrators of those, of those municipalities. Also, for the other, other municipalities where they're split, for example, Robbinsville is another one. Everybody's uniformly pleased with PSENG and not, you know, and uniformly displeased with JCP&L. So that could be another move. And in fact, I think at the last council meeting, I proposed that we collaborate with Bernard's Township to see if we could get them involved. Perhaps, Mayor, you could talk to their mayor. You know, if they were so inclined, we could go as a, in tandem to the BPU and ask that they allow PSENG, if it made business sense for them, to extend them into, into both Bernard's Township and Burnsville.
Yeah, I mean, if we could add it to this resolution, I would, I would love to.
I would support that as well.
I actually have a meeting, Assemblywoman Ora Dunn set up a meeting with BPU and the mayors on the 22nd. So report back on how that goes.
At the meeting, I'm sorry, with JCP&L or PSE?
No, BPU.
Oh, the BPU.
The issues we've had with this last storm.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that's good, but that's just...
Yeah, no, it did...
Those meetings have taken place in the past.
Yeah.
That way. And nothing happens. So I think we, you know, the, I think it's important to recognize, and I don't have the exact numbers, I think they're in the, in the resolution. JCP&L is not a New Jersey company. They're based out of Ohio. They put together something like $700 million of infrastructure changes, of which only about $150 million are in New Jersey. The rest of it is out of state, Pennsylvania, Ohio, West Virginia. We are not top of mind for them. Whereas PSENG is a New Jersey company and, you know, this, this is where they do their business. So I think, you know, we could talk to the BPU, but money talks.
Yep.
So is the resolution on for a vote tonight? Or were we just discussing it?
It was for discussion, if you want to add that, add another whereas or a therefore. It's a therefore that we also asked them to...
Well, let's ask, let's make that a therefore, that we, therefore, we asked the BPU to, to allow PSENG to extend their catchment area into Burnsville.
Does that mean it's allowed or it's, that's a done deal?
No, I mean, the PSENG would have to decide whether they want to do that. I mean, it would just, it would permit them, you know, what we're asking is to permit them to do that.
Why does you have to approve it?
The borough? Sorry.
BPU would have to approve PSENG to come in here. So we want to ask that they allow that to happen.
Understood. Once they say yes, we're allowed to do it, do we get another decision point? Or is it now it's just up to the companies and BPU?
My understanding is it's theoretically possible, but very difficult. There are a lot of other issues like ownership of the infrastructure and things. But I think Jeff's language is, is appropriate.
Okay.
To pursue it.
I think it also lets JCP&L know that we're serious about this and...
I like that message.
But I think, and I, I, I think we, I'd like to see us vote on it now because I think time is important. JCP&L is already asking for more money. I don't want to put this off.
Yeah, Anthony, if you just, the very last paragraph, there's, it talks about Morris County, the last, be it further resolved. So change that. It says, "The representatives from Morris County, the mayors of all Morris." So if we can just get that fixed too.
Now therefore too. Now therefore be resolved. Let's go Morris County.
Says Morris County, yeah.
Yeah, I'll change that to Somerset. And then I'll add the, be it further resolved to ask the BPU to allow PSENG. I'm sorry, to ask BPU to allow PSENG to allow their area to expand into Burnsville? Is that, that we're looking for?
Yes.
Does that sound good? Okay.
Yeah.
I will add that as well.
Can I ask if, I mean, I realize this is all about JCP&L and now PSENG, but is there, would, would the BPU be the same people to ask for the extension of Comcast into, to, to, for FiOS to be extended and things like that within the borough? Because I feel like, you know, there's FiOS available in some areas, not others. But, I mean, only having Comcast, is it, is it the same board?
It's the same word, but it's a whole different process.
Okay. Okay. I'll bring it up in new business then, I guess.
Okay. So do we want to move it? What number would this be?
223.
223.
Right. So I don't know the exact language, but I move that we accept resolution 20-223, I think you said?
Right.
Regarding JCP&L, oh gosh, different language here. Requesting the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities to investigate Jersey Central Power and Light's response to Tropical Storm Isaiah and opposing Jersey Central Power and Light's petition for a rate increase.
A second.
Roll call, Jack? Or do you care?
No, that could be a voice for it as well.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposition? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Six I, Facebook pages for borough committees. This came up because the diversity council wanted to have a Facebook page where they could post announcements of any meetings they're having, any programs they're running, any classes that are available. And I talked to Chris Demotto about doing that and then Jack and I spoke because we don't really have a policy on whether committees can have their own Facebook pages, you know, I mean, or do they have to use the borough Facebook page? Or, so, I don't know. Jack suggested we talk about it.
Councilman Hammond, I think this goes to your communications and IT committee you wanted a while ago.
And it died in a 4-3 vote, or 3-4 vote, I guess I should say. But I think this, you know, I'd like to resurrect that and this would feed right into it because then you re, if you have committees having individual Facebook pages or websites, but they're linked to the, to the borough, who controls the content or who approves?
My concern. That's my concern as well.
I think this should be part of a bigger issue, which is not, and I'll, I'll be happy to reintroduce the proposal that was voted down last year.
Recreation has a Facebook page of their own.
Yeah, but I think the recreation page is, is maintained by a borough employee.
It's not a committee, it's a department.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it is maintained by Rec. Yeah, only like Bob and Neil have access.
Only that's not done by an employee.
It's not done by an employee, Mayor?
Which one?
Which one's not done by an employee?
The Environmental Commission, I believe.
They have their own website?
Facebook.
Facebook page? Well, I do think that makes sense to try and coordinate this, even if one exists today. Perforation of multiple Facebook pages and, you know, then, you know, it could quickly get out of hand, you know, who's, who's checking what's getting put up. And it may not be an issue for years, but at some point down the road, it certainly has the potential for getting out of control. You know, I, I supported Councilman Hammond's original proposal that we have an IT committee. I think that, you know, the, the recent problems at the school system where they've been, you know, under attack by ransomware, I think the, the ongoing situations where we're doing more and more things online. It makes sense at this point to be forward-looking enough to have a, an IT strategy, an IT plan. Then, you know, these types of decisions could go to that committee and it doesn't have to take up the council's time. We could, you know, recommend these things go off to the committee and have them come back with a recommendation and, and have the heavy lifting be done by the, that committee.
My issue with a committee, this, this to me is, communications is a responsibility of an employee, somebody with a clear line of accountability as well as expectations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me clarify what I meant. I, I don't necessarily think that it should be done by a committee made up of people from the public. Maybe there might be a representative or two, but I think it should be mainly a, you know, a committee made up by, you know, employees and people with responsibility for these types of...
It could, it could be a council committee where we, you know, we have standing committee of three council member.
I was thinking something much more similar to like our public works committee, you know, which has public meetings, but it's mainly staffed by council members and, and staff in the borough.
See, I, I think it's a redundant, in my, this is just my opinion. I think if there's a communication that needs to go out from a committee of any kind, it goes to a staff member. That, that's its appropriateness and that is responsible for posting. I don't think it's a really committee. It's, it's a job function.
No, we just don't have the role. But...
Well, technically we do. As far as the job description.
If it's just actual information, like meeting dates and times, why, why can't the website just suffice?
Did you say that again, John?
Matt, I mean, if we're just, the purpose is to just disseminate information about meeting dates and times and, you know, or minutes, I mean, why can't the website just suffice? I mean, I, I personally have a very low opinion of social media. It's just, you know, one of the worst things about full humanity. But, you know, just, the website just, you know, that's where I go, at least.
Well, we do have a borough web, Facebook page. And so any information from committees could go on the borough web.
Yes.
Page, which I believe Chris Demotto manages for us. Yes? Is that right?
So it could be a simple form of the communication that's required. This form's filled out and sent to Chris and Chris determines its appropriateness.
Yeah. Ralph was shaking his head. Yes, Chris manages that for us. Yes.
Okay. Let me, Ralph, I have a question for you though. Unmute yourself. There. No. You're not, you're still muted. There you go. Why is he still muted?
I don't know. I, I had asked to unmute, but, but he's still muted. You're muted now.
There he goes.
Is there, do you have a, do employees have something they sign about their use of the internet? You know, like a statement about what the, what their, the borough policy is on using the...
Social media policy is what you're referring to, Anthony.
That's it.
Yeah. Anthony, I believe that we do, there's, there is a section in the personnel policies.
Right. In the, in the employee handbook and people sign that, that they've read that. And so, yes, it's part of the employee handbook. The personnel policy.
Yeah. Is it an internet, is it like internet use policy or is it a social media policy?
Should be both.
I know it's internet use. I can look and see if it's social.
Yeah. No, that's what I thought it would be, internet use.
Gina, would you mind reviewing that policy for us? Because I'm guessing it's...
Yeah. Changed so much.
Yeah, I, I could take a look at it.
Social media.
Yeah. I think we veered off into three separate discussions though at this point. So I think we need to bring it back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to the mayor's original question. I think if there's a communication committee needs to make, there's a simple communication that goes to Chris and Chris independently determines if it goes on the Facebook page and/or the website and/or both.
Yeah. And that's pretty much what we're doing now, right? I think Chris pretty much handles all the communications through the website and the Facebook pages. And actually, we have a Twitter account too. I think he does that as well.
Yeah. And things that we post on our website, we can ask Alpha Dog to post on our Facebook page and Twitter. So anything we send through to post on the website could also be posted just by asking Alpha Dog to post that as well.
So Alpha Dog does our Facebook page?
Well, they can post to our Facebook page. You know, putting stuff that we put on our website, they can also post that to our Facebook page and Twitter page. I've asked them to do that.
They did do our Facebook page, didn't they?
I thought Chris did it.
No, no, but he, he has to work through Alpha Dog.
Right.
He can't really do anything. He has to go through them.
Why?
The, the website, yes. The Facebook page is no.
Yeah, I don't think he does. I think he posts things.
The website, you're right.
Yeah, the, the website, yeah.
I just meant as an alternative, we could ask Alpha Dog to put stuff on, on the Facebook page that they have the ability to do that, but Chris can as well, I believe.
Okay. All right. You answered my question because we've got all these Lloyd people, Lloyd Road people waiting here. So can we move on?
I'd like to respond to this though.
Well, it's not a pub, oh, who's talking?
Okay.
It's Joanna who's talking.
Do you want to say something? No.
Oh, well, I'll wait. Are you going to have a public discussion about the Facebook business, this particular issue?
No, we don't have another public. So if you want to add something, because I did mention...
I just want to say that the purpose of the Environmental Commission seeking media is because we've lost our venues for, which we have a charge for public education. That's part of all environmental commission's responsibility. And so we don't have the ability of doing the country day at Broward and Headwaters, for instance, or doing something at Audubon. I, I would very, very often take advantage of any way I could get public education, whether it's e-waste or whatever. Now, we've lost that because of, you know, distancing and less opportunities. So our topics, we thought, we made a whole list of all the possible things and we've had a lot of feed in of topics. Like for instance, they could be short, like, don't put white bees down the toilet. It's jeopardizing our system. Certain kind of bird feeds that are better, what's, when the monarch caterpillars are out and what they need. And, you know, I can go on and on and base the plan. So we've picked things that we think are beneficial for people to understand in the environmental setting. That's our charge. And I perfectly recognize that the Environmental Commission is selected and appointed by the council and that we are part of you as the committee. But I think all environmental commissions need to have some kind of public awareness independence. In fact, I'm looking at the environmental manual.
Yeah, but I think we're going like super off topic though. I, Joanne, I totally understand where you're coming from. I don't think anybody's questioning the use of Environmental Commission with Facebook. So we were just talking about expanding for other, other committees.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there is a, a procedure that we should do, but so far we've been happy with adding, introducing a lot of concepts that we want people to know about.
Yeah. I think it would be good. I think Dr. Hammond will take his off, take his, you know, resolution probably offline and bring it back in another couple of weeks. So probably be included.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Can we move on to the Lloyd Road speeding issue? Jeff, you want to report on that?
Sure. Yes. So we, we met, the Public Safety Committee met. Sure, yes. Uh, so we, we met, the Public Safety Committee met. Um, I know Chief Valentine's on, on, uh, on the line here, so. If I get anything wrong, just jump in there. But I think it's fair to say that the consensus was we were sympathetic to the problem on Lloyd Road. We recognized that it's a heavily traveled road, as I mentioned, it has over 3,000, at least currently had over 3,000 uh, vehicle, uh, uh, transits a day. Um, we don't have the unilateral ability to reduce the speed limit to 25. There are, the DOT allows for some discretion, but that's above a certain minimum level. So in order to reduce the speed limit, and by the way, this is a problem that we faced elsewhere within the, the borough. Um, we had, have speeding problems on Bernard's Avenue, and in fact, that's what prompted, uh, Councilwoman Zamar to have the walkability study. Uh, and we implemented some changes on Bernard's Avenue. We had, uh, the issue of the hot button issue last year on Wesley Avenue. We, we investigated very heavily, uh, the idea of speed bumps and other mitigation, uh, uh, efforts. Uh, so, you know, lowering the speed limit to 25 is not necessarily, uh, the, the solution because we still had speeding on those roads, even though they had lower speed limits. Um, so I think the first order of business in order to look at what would work or potentially might work is to have an engineering study. Uh, and we done, and we did that for some of the other roads in, in the borough. Uh, and that would only, that would tell us not only, uh, in fact, it would not only support potentially having a lower speed limit, but also would investigate the, uh, other, other mitigation, uh, speed calming efforts, including sidewalks. So we would direct the engineer to give us a host of recommendations. An engineering study, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, would only cost a couple thousand dollars. Um, it's, it's, it's economical in that sense. Uh, and their proposal on behalf of the, uh, Public Safety Committee is that the, the borough approves those funds so we can go, go down that first step. The other things that would actually happen, um, already is the chief has been working with, um, Public Works in terms of improved signage on that road. Um, that, uh, may, may potentially, uh, reduce speeding. Uh, there's going to be some, uh, added lining, um, uh, down the, the street as well, um, in terms of striping. Um, he's gonna allocate, uh, we have, uh, I think a dozen or so uh, electronic speed signs which have shown to be helpful on Wesley, on Anderson Hill, on Bernard's Avenue, on Mullins. Uh, so they're gonna be putting the electronic speed signs um, on Lloyd as well as the increase in surveillance. So those are the steps that we can take immediately. In terms of reducing the speed to 25, that requires an engineering study and we would ask the borough to approve the funds for that.
So, so Jeff, um, you, you bit off a big, uh, piece of pie there. There's a lot of information in what you said. Um, first of all, let's go back, the, 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 the speed limit, uh, for everybody's benefit on that street is 35 miles an hour presently. That's not a discretionary speed. That's a speed that is set by state statute and was confirmed by an engineering study that we did back in 1997. So if we want to lower the speed to 25 miles an hour, and that was our recommendation, that we attempt to lower the speed limit on that street to 25 miles an hour, we would in fact require an engineering study, um, of that street to um, give us the warrants that would be needed under the law to be able to legally lower the speed limit to less than the 35 mile an hour statutory, uh, zone that Lloyd Road is. So it's not really a matter of, you know, we'd like to do it for recommendations, we would have to do it if we want to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. Um, as far as the signage goes, you know, John McDowell and I have been talking about improved signage along that street. Uh, the striping was done today on Lloyd Road. I believe there's W O lines, uh, that were put up there today. Um, you know, we, we plan to go up there this week and, you know, mark out some signs, but we felt it would be prudent if the Borough Council decided to pursue an engineering study that we wait for the results of the study because that study would include, um, a professional recommendation as to the types of signs and the locations of signs, rather than have us go put in the signs that we feel are warranted right now under the current speed limit and would all have to be removed, taken out and then replanted again after the study was done, uh, possibly after the ground freezes, which would be extremely difficult for the DPW to do. So, you know, we would like to see an expedited, uh, study being done with, with signed recommendations for that street as well. Uh, as far as the electronic speed signs go, we talked about that, I believe, in the committee as being an option, but we would have to see if there was funding available for those signs or if any signs were in fact available at this time. I'm not sure that we have any signs available to install up there. I'd have to look and see if there were one or two that maybe are still waiting to be installed somewhere, but I know we had a lady, a waiting list of roads that, uh, were requesting those electronic speed signs as well. And the placement of those signs is again, not really something that's arbitrary, but rather should be based on a recommendation by a traffic engineer as to where those signs would be best placed on that street. So if we proceed with the study, we would ask for that as well. Um, a recommendation for, for electronic speed signs, um, if they were going to be installed, as to where they would be installed.
So, so am I understanding correctly then, so even if we wanted to arbitrarily change it to 25, we could not? Until this engineering study was complete? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. That's correct. Jack?
That, that is correct. I mean, Chief and I have discussed it and reviewed the section together. An engineering study is required.
But does it, engineering study comes to the borough, we don't have to go to the DOT with that, do we?
That, that's correct. We, we just have to have a basis for lowering the speed limit. We just can't do it arbitrarily.
So the study is just for our benefit?
That's right, but we need it to document the action we take.
Yeah, we need it to support, uh, uh, support our.
Right, no, I'm just looking at Chris's, uh, information in the chat and he said, yeah, he mentioned that 99% of engineering studies lead to the determination of not changing the speed limit. I don't think that's been the case in the borough when we've done them, has it? Cause I know we've done them before.
Well, I, I, I don't know about the percentage of engineering studies. I mean, look, the last study we did was, was in 1999, I believe, and conditions have in fact, I believe, changed a bit up on Lloyd Road.
Yeah.
You know, you have more, you have more children present. I don't think there's been a lot of development, but I think that the traffic volume has probably increased significantly since 1997. That's one, that's a consideration. You know, there's a variety of considerations that will be taken into effect with an engineering study. Um, you know, the other thing too is we, we did do a speed survey back at the end of July to get an idea of what was happening with the speeds on that street. So we have that speed data. And now we also are collecting, uh, speed data on Lloyd Road, um, after the paving and we, we suspect that the speeds will increase as a result of the paving, which is kind of a double edged sword, you know, you don't want to see an increase in speed, but in this case, if we do the study, the higher speeds might, um, might lend towards a more favorable recommendation to lower the speed limit on the street. So.
So Chief, you mentioned the potential consideration of sidewalks and other mitigating factors. Um, knowing where Lloyd, Lloyd Road is, and I, I think Chris mentioned in his testimony, you know, obviously the ability to reach the, the school properties is, is a big issue. Is it better or is it more costly for us to study that entire corridor from Lloyd? In, you know, onto Mendham and into town? Is that?
So, so.
And Washington Corner, for that matter?
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, this has come up over the years, um, you know, Mr. McQueen, we, we, um, we, we've asked, you know, for sidewalk consideration down Anderson, up Andrew, both sides of Anderson Hill Road, down uh, Men, Anderson Hill, all the way to Mendham Road and Mendham Road to Tower Mountain. Um, you, you know, to extend it to Lloyd Road, yeah, sure, it's, it would make sense to study that, but it really comes down to funding. Um, do you have the money to fund those studies and those engineering studies? And to do a feasibility study on, on putting sidewalks in? Based on the concerns of the residents that have been expressed to the police department, you know, there were three major recommendations that we made, um, that I made to, to, uh, the Public Safety Committee. The first one was is that we pursue a speed reduction to 25 miles an hour. The second was that we install the electronic speed signs. And the third was that we do a feasibility study and, uh, look to, uh, construct sidewalks on Lloyd Road, especially in the area of Lloyd Road where the, the children seem to be walking, where the bus stop is. I, I'm not sure if there's one bus stop or more bus stops, but where the bus stops are located that the children might have to be walking to. Um, I don't think the kids on Lloyd Road walk to the school. I think they're bused, if that's, am I correct in that?
No, no, they, they said earlier, they're only within a mile of the school and buses only two miles.
So that's something that I wasn't aware of and that's absolutely ridiculous. And I've gone around and around with the school district on this multiple times before about their busing policies. Um, there are certain areas in town where it's just not safe and it doesn't make any sense whatsoever to have the kids um, walk. And the fact that they won't provide safety busing, you know, now they, they don't. There, there's places where they can provide a bus, you know, for safety reasons. And, you know, we've, we've lobbied for bus stops at areas and buses to go into areas. They don't like to do it if you're within the two miles, but that's absolutely ridiculous that, that they won't, uh, consider the safety considerations whether, in areas where there's no sidewalks. That's something that needs to be raised with the Board of Education. I wasn't aware that, uh, those kids were actually walking from, from that, uh.
So who takes that to the board? Because I don't think we have an official liaison to the Board of Ed, do we?
No, that's.
Something, well, something I brought up a while ago, but we haven't had.
But, um, when I worked for the Chester School Board, we would, we had a, uh, a policy and you can say in your policy that these roads are hazardous. You declare them hazardous and then they're, they're, um, you can bust the children and they're not considered courtesy anymore.
I certainly would address a problem, but I don't think it would be satisfactory to the people who I've heard, uh, you know, today, because I mean, it would solve the problem with the children walking to school, but I think we'd still be left with a speeding issue for other times of the day or when the children are out playing or whatever. So I, I, while I think it's something worth pursuing, I don't think that that is the crux of everything that we need to look at. Secondly, uh, Jack, I, I wanted to get your opinion again because there's members of the public in the chat room that are, are claiming that our information is incorrect, that the NJDOT has no jurisdiction over changing the speed limit. They're, they could provide advice, but it's completely up to us. Do we have 100% control, Jack, over whether or not this speed limit is 35 or 25 on this road?
It, it's not correct to say that NJDOT does not have jurisdiction. They've delegated to municipalities the ability to set speed limits on local roads. However, it specifically says whenever it shall be determined upon the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation that any speed here and above set forth is greater or less than is reasonable or safe under the conditions found to exist. So, as the chief said earlier, and as Dr. Hammond said, we, we have to have that engineering and traffic study to justify a lower speed limit.
So I mean, just for the benefit of the public then, I mean, I don't think the borough is against the idea. I mean, I'm not against this idea. I think what we're saying is we need to go through a process. The process includes this engineering study. I, I think that, you know, uh, we can't forego the process. As far as I understand, Jack, we have to follow the process. I mean, if we, if we just voted tonight to lower it to 25, what happens?
Then someone who got a speeding ticket could appear on municipal court and say that the ordinance was not properly adopted and have the ticket thrown out.
Is that the worst thing that can happen?
Well, unless there's an accident in this, in the slower speed is a, is a contributory factor, now you're looking at a, a possible lawsuit for, you know, knowingly not conforming with the state statute regarding the setting of speeds in, in the state.
Hey, you opened yourself up to 1983 actions, civil rights actions, that sort of thing.
So Jack, what happens if the engineering study comes back and does not recommend a lowering of steam, of the, the speed limit? Can we override the engineering study at that point?
No, we'd have to have a basis to do that. We, you know, we can give more facts to the traffic engineer, but we can't just arbitrarily override it.
Uh, Chief Valentine, what did the speed data that you collected earlier this year, what did it consist of and what did it tell us?
Well, it, it, it basically, it's hard for me to explain to people who don't really understand how these speed studies are done, and I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer. But, um, basically it found that the speeds that were being traveled on Lloyd Road were with, were within the engineering standards and that the speed limit was properly established at that time. Um, it's within the 85th percentile, which is a, a traffic engineering standard that basically states that the speed of vehicles is at or below that which 85% of all vehicles are observed to travel under free flowing conditions past a monitored point. So there's a lot of things that they consider when they do their study, and I don't think that we're looking at the same conditions today that we were looking at in 1997. I personally am relatively optimistic that the, uh, traffic engineer who provided us with the quote is very open minded and very, um, in tune to the, um, concerns that are being voiced here tonight. And he'll give it the appropriate, uh, consideration and, you know, instead of working against us, I think he's trying to work with us, but we still have to ensure that all of the proper warrants are met. I mean, we have, heck, we even have swans crossing the road up there. I don't know if we had that back in 1979. There's kids walking up and down the street and there's residents that walk around the curb with a dog with no sidewalks. You know, all this is is things that he can consider and that we can relay to him when he comes in to do his, um, his study for us. And, you know, the other thing is the brush, the overgrowth at the side of the roads that grows out into the roadway that restricts the width of the road and cuts back the visions, forces pedestrians to walk into the street. All of these things are things that he, he will consider. Um, it's not just a flat uh, um, basis, you know, upon the 85th percentile. There's, there's other considerations that are that are factored in when they make their recommendations.
So Chief, do you have to share the concern that if we address this particular road, that the problem mitigate moves to other roads then, such as Washington Corner Road?
Well, you, I, I, that, that could happen, of course. Um, I don't think that, I don't think people will want to drive on Washington. Look, it's a little bit more out of their way. It's a lot more onerous of a, of a route of travel. Um, it's, it's more narrow, it's windy, it's longer. Um, right now, it's not in anywhere near as good condition as Lloyd Road is in. Um, I don't think you'll, you'll see a big influx of people moving to Washington Corner Road, but I think that Washington Corner Road does have a lot of the same, um, concerns and considerations that that the residents of Lloyd Road have. And it would be right, my recommendation, if you were to move forward with a traffic engineering study on Lloyd Road, that we, we do Washington Corner Road at this time. But it does parallel Lloyd Road. It is in the, the same area, has the same general characteristics. I think Washington Corner Road is quite frankly, um, a little bit more, um, difficult to navigate than, than Lloyd Road is. It probably is conducive to lower speeds than Lloyd Road, but I don't live on that street, so I don't know, you know, what the speeds are on that street. I haven't seen the data, but.
Is there an economy of scale to do the study on both roads at the same time versus one now and one later?
I, I believe there would be. We would have to ask the traffic engineer, but I, I think, you know, to bring them in once instead of twice, um, makes a lot of sense. I think.
Did you say you have a quote?
I do.
How much is it?
I believe it's $1,200 plus five, up to 5% of that cost for travel and expenses.
I mean, I think we should move ahead with this study and I think we should include Washington Corner Road if it's in the order of magnitude same amount of dollars. I don't know, Ralph, if we can afford that, but.
I think he's saying we can afford it.
I, I think based on that, what we've heard from the public tonight and, uh, the, the chief's recommendations, it makes sense to do this study. Uh, it sounds like something we need to do prior to lowering the speed limit, which is, uh, desirable by the public. And I think, you know, uh, if I had to guess, may, maybe be supported by a majority of the council, if not the full council.
Let me just re- reiterate, though, lowering the speed limit is, is not the be all and end all. Um, we, we lowered the speed limit on Wesley and still got a lot of speeding problems. So I think the value of the engineering study, which will confirm what we all want, which is to lower the speed limit, but it would also give us some guidance in terms of, uh, direction for, you know, where to put various signs, where to put the electronic speed sign. Uh, how far do you put the sidewalk? Um, you know, where, where are the key areas to play?
Well, the sidewalk, uh, the sidewalk would not be included in this. That's, that's a completely different study, uh, Dr. Hammond.
Oh, I, I thought you said that the, we could give direction to the, to the engineering uh, study, to the engineer about, uh, making recommendations about the sidewalk, no?
Well, he could make, no, not, when, there's all kinds of other engineering structural, I mean, um, structural, environmental conditions that need to be factored into. That's a, that's a whole different type of, uh, of a feasibility study when you start to, to do cost analysis and things like that. Um, the traffic engineer really would, would, I mean, I, I suppose, I don't, I don't know what his qualifications are for doing studies on sidewalk construction, but, I mean, y- you could ask him to include that, but I think it would be significantly more expensive. I think right now um, we're focusing on, on speed and, and, um, and safety. And I think sidewalks would, would certainly, um, le- lead towards a higher, um, Lead towards a higher um, level of pedestrian safety on that street without a doubt, but I think it has to be. I think it needs to be treated as a separate issue, otherwise the speed limit thing could get completely bogged down.
Might be a separate engineer, but I think we should do it all at once then. I mean, that just, to me, it doesn't make sense to just lower the speed limit and not consider a sidewalk.
I think the only thing I would think of, uh, Dr. Hammond is, you know, we talked about sidewalks as a solution in on Bernard's Avenue at one time. And um, it got, it did get bogged down and a lot of other issues that come along with sidewalks in terms of. You know, not on my property, you know, you know, not 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 on my side of the street, put it on the other side of the street. I mean, these are issues that bogged us down on Bernard's Avenue, not to say that it would stop us from doing anything on Lloyd Road, but I I would like to take the recommendation of the chief, which is to separate the two issues. Um, you know, and if we want to pursue the idea of sidewalk, I'm I I don't, I I'm not against it. But I I think it, we we shouldn't tie the two together because time wise, we're gonna push this out, you know?
Well, I I think there's a bigger issue and I I support what's been said that we need to do the study and move things forward as I support lowering the speed limit on Lloyd Road. But there's a bigger issue. We're we're currently in discussion about expanding the downtown corridor in a way that makes Burnersville a walkable town. Um, and fundamentally, right now, I think we all have heard and have seen. And I know we passed the Safe Streets Ordinance and Resolutions very recently. It's it's not a very walkable town with the exception of a few places. So I I would be in support of globally lowering the speed limit in a relatively large envelope around this town and enforcing it strongly. Um, so I think there's a bigger issue that I I I'd like the Safety Committee to take up, which is is a more global reduction in speed. Um, to help the overall walkability, because obviously we don't have the funds to put walk, to put sidewalks everywhere at this point.
Chad, you can't, you can't do that. Um, the the globally, we've we've looked at that globally in the past and that's how we ended up with the thirty-five mile an hour. Uh, speed zones, believe it or not. Um, the three speeds that are recognized by state statute are twenty-five miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour. And fifty miles an hour. Um, within my my lifetime here at Bernersville Police Department, we never had thirty-five mile an hour speed limits. We actually had streets uh, in Bernersville, Lloyd Road and Hardscrabble being one of them that were fifty miles an hour. Um, because of the uh, formulas that are in the state statute. Um, that determines speeds and then they created what's called the suburban thirty-five. When the suburban thirty-five was created, we were able to go through the town and designate all those streets that met the suburban thirty-five criteria. And that was more or less the global approach that you're talking about. Anywhere that could be a twenty-five was a twenty-five. Anywhere that could be a thirty-five, could be a thirty-five, but in order to be a thirty-five, we had to put speed signs up. For the thirty-five mile an hour zone, it has to be posted. And then there's a rural fifty, if there's no speed signs up. Everything is is automatically a fifty miles an hour if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet the criteria of the twenty-five or thirty-five mile an hour zones. So the state is pretty well said, you know, because they don't want every town setting. You know, these crazy speed limits and and, you know, when you go from one town to the next town to the next town, I think the state took the approach years ago and historically. That there has to be some uh, uniformity throughout the state and, but they do give the the municipalities discretion. To deviate from that on a case by case basis where a traffic engineer certifies that there is a need. So there, here we are.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my my concern with the engineering study and, uh, you know, it's like when we talked about this for Wesley. You know, I remember you chief saying, you know, and anytime that we have complaints on streets, then we have to fund an engineering study in order to lower the speed limit. So, I mean, what's gonna stop us from having to do this on every street as people start to put their complaints in? So, I mean, for me, if we have a, if we have a global kind of, you know, the streets that fall under what can be done at twenty-five versus thirty-five. I don't know what those rules are, but I mean, can we just, you know, follow those? I mean, what I heard you just say was that if the street could be twenty-five, it was.
So it without, without other conditions that warrant a lower speed. Um, there's, there's a variety of different factors that are all considered in and taken into place when when they do these speed studies to include. Um, you know, the road surface conditions, the lane width, the shoulder configurations, the presence of curves and hills, the presence of pedestrians. Sight distance and and sight obstructions, intersecting streets and driveways, surrounding development along the roadway, um, wildlife habitat. Um, you know, uh, brush and and um, growth along the streets, drainage, there's there's uh, on on the street. Um, you know, ponds and settling of of water and ice on the street. So your your answer, I think, is is that. Yeah, thirty-five mile an hour might be the state standard for that road, but because that's road meets the thirty-five mile an hour state standard. It doesn't take into consideration the unique factors of all um, of of those things that I I just mentioned. Um, that would require, you know, for common sense and safety, a lower speed, that they're leaving up to us. So.
Some of the residents.
On a case by case basis and that's pretty much what we've been doing and, you know.
I know, it just is a lot of money on a case by case basis.
But you don't have to do everything. You can say no. You can say no based on the traffic data and and based on the, you know. They based on the uh, factors of the roadway. You don't have to do it.
So some, so so, yeah, what if we want to lower the speed limit? Now you're saying we have to, so.
No, no, I didn't say, I didn't say that.
Yeah, you said we can't lower the speed limit without going to the, getting an engineering study.
Right, I did say that, yes. I didn't say we had to lower the speed limit.
No, 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 but in order to, we had to do this engineering study. So that the residents are saying that Lloyd was historically twenty-five miles an hour.
No. It's incorrect.
Uh, Kevin, have we done a um, you know, a a radar on that street, you know, for a consistent period of time to to. Sometimes when you pull people over every day for two weeks, it's the message, you know?
Yeah, radar, you know, it's not, it's not the panacea that everybody thinks it is, because typically when we're out there, we don't see the speeding, because everybody's blinking their lights when they go around the corner and people are slowing down. We're slowing people down while we're there, but you know, you're not gonna see a lot of stops or a lot of tickets being written all the time depending on the volume of traffic that's there. But I do want to go back and and just say something, um, and correct myself. Uh, you say the residents are saying that historically the speed limit was twenty-five miles an hour. Um, going back before nineteen ninety-seven, um, that's a long time ago. The speed limit was twenty-five miles an hour and we got caught with the improper speed. Um, on that street and that's why we had to do the thirty, that's why it went to a thirty-five, because it was supposed to be, I believe, a fifty. There was an old, old document in the file about that, but as it stands today, it's not an option for us at twenty-five miles an hour. But it hasn't been twenty-five miles an hour in probably thirty, more than thirty years that I've been here. And we were there today, by the way, running radar. We were there at seven thirty this morning and we were there again at four thirty, probably for about a half hour each time. And we had an officer on the street for a few hours when the striking crew was there as well. So we did have police on that street today as well. And we have instructed officers to increase their radar patrols there versus, um, you know, since the end of July. When this first came into uh, to our attention, this was.
What were the average speeds during the speed study that you said was most recent?
Let me see if I can do this for you. This was the end of July. Let me know if you can see this. Can you see the, can you see the speed report?
Yeah, it's a little small, but yeah, if you hit that little arrow to the right, it'll close the.
Is it bigger now?
Yes, perfect, thank you.
So we we, the last, the last speed data we have for that street or the most recent speed data that we have for that street is from July eighth to July fourteenth. Um, we ran it on both directions and you can see, it gives you the variations of the speed. Um, you know, that they were traveling in five mile an hour increments, one to five, six to ten, eleven to fifteen, sixteen to twenty. And it's in in both directions, um, north and was probably what is it, north and south, I guess, or east and west, maybe. And you get, we get both lanes. So you can see where the speeds are, but you know, one of the telling, again, we talked about that eighty-fifth percentile. You can see that eighty-five percent or less of the vehicles or eighty-five percent of the vehicles traveling on that road. Are traveling at the posted speed limit or less than the posted speed limit. The eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-four, the eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-six in the other direction. Now, I'm not saying that 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 says it's a safe speed. When you're traveling on a road with no sidewalks and narrow and somebody's going by you at thirty-five miles an hour. That's really fast, all right? But that's one of the engineering factors that they look at, but I think, you know. I think we have enough mitigating circumstances uh, present on that street to be able to get the warrants to lower the speed limit. It, you know, hopefully to twenty-five, but you know, maybe thirty.
Good question, chief. The the, this data does seem to indicate that there's more than three thousand cars, fifteen hundred in one direction and eighteen hundred in the other.
Thirty-four, all right, so I, you know, look, you're, I was talking off the top of my head there. It wasn't three thousand a day, it was more like three thousand a week. The number's thirty-four hundred, thir- thir- three thousand four hundred. Thirty-one total vehicles during the uh, seven days of the study.
Got it, thank you. So um, you know, four, five hundred cars a day, uh, would you, would you think that that's uh, materially changed? It seems like a lot of cars to me. Do you think that's materially changed since nineteen ninety-seven?
I do, I do.
And that's one of, and that's one of the things they would consider in this traffic study?
I I I believe it is, yeah. Well, that volume is definitely one of the things that they consider. I don't know that they would go back to nineteen ninety-seven. And really take a close look at that if you're gonna look at what are the conditions today.
Right, but I mean, that volume is, like you said, a major factor.
I I, yeah, volume's obviously a factor. It's one factor. I don't know how much weight an engineer would give it if I was doing it. And from my experience, I think it is, it's a significant factor.
I mean, so at this point, I I think the the choice that we have is to get this study done as quickly as possible. Hope it's in this, in the right direction and then if it's not, then we'll have to find out a different way to deal with the issue.
I I think too, if I can just comment on the speed study, I think we're gonna see some higher speeds. Um, and probably some increased volume. Once the schools, well, again, schools are not at normal capacity right now, so. We're already looking at a decreased volume in in July when we did this, when schools were out. Now schools are not back to full swing. And once the schools are open, I think we're gonna see an increase in the traffic on that street as well as an increase in the uh, in the speeds as a result of the paving. Which will lend itself, I believe, to a more favorable uh, condition for a speed limit reduction on that street. Which is why we're doing a a a s- a survey now as well.
So Chief, sorry, go ahead.
I I was just gonna ask a question about the study in general. This this, this speed study, was this conducted by our department or is that?
This is by us. So, so look, we don't, let's leave the speed studies to the traffic engineers. Um, we collected this speed data and we we looked at the conditions up there. Um, you know, we talked to the residents, we, you know, I personally drove that street multiple times. It was a little bit difficult with all the construction going on to get a. Get a feel for what's happening right now, but I've certainly known that street for many, many, many years. I've traveled that street for many years, so I have a good idea of what. What the the speed and traffic conditions are like up there. Uh, but yes, we we did collect this data.
Got it.
These are our recommendations.
Thank you. And was a police, sorry, was, yeah, yeah, but what, was a police officer like present during this time, like?
No, it's a, it's a uh, it it's a box, it's a small box that collects radar data. You know, we used to use the speed uh, counters that you'd see tubes across the road. Um, we don't use those anymore. We're now using uh, digital counters and and radar. Um, it's a little bit less conspicuous. Um, but the residents who know it's there have a tendency to drive up and down the street and and like to speed through it to make the speeds go higher. As one stated to my officer when he was putting it up this week, that that's what they were gonna do, but hey, it helps us out, whatever. I'm not saying you should go speed.
So chief, from your uh, experience with prior speed studies, when somebody uh, gets the answer, uh. When we get a report, if a if a road is more heavily trafficked. Does that lead the speed study to say, well, we should maintain the speed limits or does it heavily traffic? Would that push them in the direction of we should lower the speed limits?
You know, Tom, you're really getting down into the weeds again and I'm I'm not a traffic engineer, but to me, my answer to you would be, it could be either or, but in the. In in this circumstances that we're studying, it's a residential area, it's a narrow street and there's children and pedestrians on the road. I think the speed volume, a higher volume's in our favor. You know, when you're looking at um, major thoroughfares and two and three lane highways. Where they're trying, they're more concerned about moving vehicles quickly and safely.
Something like Route two oh two, for example.
Well, not even two oh two, um, more, maybe two eighty-seven or some other two lane hot, you know, two oh two would be something in between. Um, you know, but even two oh two, you know, has its considerate. It's only forty, I think, was it forty miles an hour, I think, on two oh two?
Thirty.
No, well, I'm talking, I'm talking to rural area, not in town there, but um. You know, I think the volume, I think the higher volume here is to our favor, not not.
It's forty-five when you get outside of town.
Yeah, forty-five.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
So I think the question is, you know, do you do the, do we be commissioning the speed study and if we do, do we do both Washington Corner and Lloyd Road? Um, I think Henry's ready to kind of get on this quickly. Um, he did say he was available to do the study for us a couple of weeks ago when I asked him. And he's done, he's done some work for us before we've worked with him and then things have worked out pretty well for us.
I'd like to do both roads and especially if it's uh, cheaper to do them, you know, if you can get a volume discount, I'd like to do both roads.
I'm also supportive of that.
But I I would still go back to the side, I I think we need to have a sidewalk study as well.
I think that, I think was something we should pursue in parallel than uh, uh, Jeff, if that's what.
I agree. And if it requires a separate engineer to do it, then I think we ought to commission that, because I think that lowering the speed limit in and of itself. It may may or may not solve the problem. In fact, I think it won't. I think we need to look at it as sort of a multifactorial approach and uh. Um, I think it would just be insufficient to just do a speed study and not look at the.
I just think that Chad's, Chad's proposal of looking at the sidewalks globally makes a little more sense because. You know, everybody could benefit from a sidewalk, I think, you know, uh, and then, so it's hard to say, you know. Without looking at it more globally, you know, is this the most important sidewalk in our town?
Well, I I think there's a bigger issue though, so. I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Oh, just we don't have any money. I mean, it's like sidewalk study is great, but it's, it'll go nowhere, because we just don't have the funds.
You don't know if there's a rationale for it and if you don't know. We're we're planning for the future, you know, the the, if we find that there's a compelling reason to do it, we'll have to find the money.
It's just not there, you know, it's, it's just not. Good money after, you know, before bed, you know, we just don't have it.
Well, we did go to referendum for ten million for roads.
Yeah, well, I I think, you know, the, I think the sidewalk question is a a a borough wide question and I I. You know, I I like, I I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, Dr. Hammond, but I think Chad's approach makes more sense to me. That if we're gonna look at sidewalks, we'd start, you start from the top down, you know, where is sidewalk most needed first? Uh, if that happens to be Lloyd Road, you know, all the better. Let's do the study there or whatever, but uh, you know, maybe we need to just take a step back. And and say where, where we put sidewalks needs to be a broader question in the town.
Well, when we were looking at, we're doing a subdivision of of an area over near Kiwanis Park. And the the comment came up a sidewalk to nowhere, right? So we've gotta be careful. If we're if we're going to do, look at and think about sidewalks that need to go somewhere. Um, and that's an important part of of that construction.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do need to put some cameras or the signs or the flashing signs. I think those worked really well by the schools. Uh, and I think now people are more conscious, even when they see the sign, even if it's not actually flashing or anything, I think that people tend to just slow down.
Well, it definitely worked on Anderson Hill, but I do think in terms of sidewalks, we're talking in the abstract without really, all of us are pretty ignorant as to the cost. At the very least, I'd like to know what would it cost, you know, can we get get a bid of what it would cost to do a sidewalk study on Lloyd? So at least we have a a framework to understand if we're gonna do um, Councilman McQueen's idea of a top down study of sidewalks. What we're talking about. Right now, we don't have any idea.
Uh, I I think I would be with the getting a, getting a estimate for a global one. And then we can kind of, then we have to put it as a capital project and phase it in like we do the roads, right? I mean.
You know, Dr. Hammond, the uh, am I unmuted? Yeah. The the traffic engineer could certainly weigh in on whether he thinks. Sidewalks would be helpful or not, but when you actually talk about how much it would have cost. You know, you're talking about drainage, elevation, excavation, tree removal. Um, it's a lot more and it's something that normally has come through the uh, through the DPW side of the house, not really the traffic side of the house.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that. What I, what I, when I talking about a bid is the bid for for the study actually, but um, I. Now we're getting back to what I thought we had talked about at the Public Safety, which was that the traffic engineer doing the study would be able to at least make a recommendation. That if in his opinion, a sidewalk would make a difference.
I think we, I think we can ask him for that. Uh, that would be easy. I think, I don't think that would be a problem.
I would. I support that.
Kevin, did you have an estimate from him for that study or do we not?
It was twelve hundred dollars plus that five percent um travel and expenses. And I, you know, if if we ask him for Washington Corner Road, I I wouldn't expect it to be any more than that. But you know, I I don't know. I'd have to ask him what he would, what he would charge for both roads.
That's reasonable, I think.
Yeah, it's very reasonable. It's it's less than half. It's way less than what other traffic engineers that we have have asked bids for. I mean, it's probably twenty five to thirty percent of what we've gotten previous quotes on on other not comparable jobs or other engineering jobs from other firms. He's very reasonable.
So can we uh, are we agreed that we should do the uh study of the two streets, get the engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that that's my opinion.
Yep.
My as well.
Okay, do we uh, Jack, do we need to do anything official here? Do we need to do a?
You're on mute, Jack.
A resolution or what what do you want from us?
Sorry about that. I I think you've got a consensus to proceed.
Okay. All right. Are sorry, are we doing anything about cameras or the signs or?
So, yeah, so what what we'll do is we'll look to see if we have any signs right now. And if we did, if they were on a waiting list to be installed on some other streets. If we do have signs, hopefully, we could work with the traffic engineer quickly to find out where where they would go up um and be the most effective. I'd like to get all this done before the ground freezes. You know, but the signs, if we don't have them, they would have to be bu- budgeted and and purchased. So that probably wouldn't happen right away.
What do they cost a piece?
Were they like eighty five hundred dollars a piece or something like that? Or I I I forget, Mayor, I'd have to.
But it was like a for three of them, we had a certain number.
Ralph, do you recall what they were? I don't.
Yeah.
Oh, you just muted yourself, Ralph. You were not on mute.
I thought when we bought them in in volume, we got about six thousand dollars each or something like that.
No. Ralph, what were they?
Amber?
Yeah, I'm I'm I maybe can. I think five thousand was the number, not twenty five. I think it was five thousand.
A piece.
First sign.
Piece.
Oh, we have that portable one, the large.
Yeah, you know, we could, we could, we haven't had a lot of success. We've had um damage done to them and on some of the more remote streets, and we've had them hit by vehicles. Um, you have to have a really a safe place to put them, a good shoulder. Um, we do have a smaller portable trailer that we might be able to deploy. You know, if we could find a spot to get it safely off the road, that could be a temporary fix um for sure. But, you know, they are solar powered. And sometimes if you don't have enough sunlight on the streets in those areas, they don't last very long and they have to be.
Well, my impression, based on the speed data that you've had, and based on the discussion from tonight, is that the the residents think that thirty five is too fast.
Right.
So having people, you know, with a speed sign that's gonna make them go thirty five, you know, we may shave off the fifteen percent that are going faster already. But I don't think we're gonna slow anybody down that's going thirty or thirty two right now. With a with a speed sign at thirty five. That that's all I'm saying. I don't know that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against the idea as because anything helps, any little bit helps, but.
We could set it to flash at a lower speed, especially as you're approaching the curve. I think there's some curve warning signs there and some reduced advisory speeds along the route. Uh, that those are the yellow signs.
Yeah.
Can put up. And that's, you know.
That's a good suggestion.
So, you know, i- if we can find a safe place to put it, that's, you know, that that would be something rather we could do. But while the residents are on it, can I ask one question? Would you? I I mean, our plan was to go out there and and put signs up right away once the street was striped. But I have a feeling that we would probably just be taking them down and relocating them again. And you know, I I would do, there's quite a bit of signage on that street already. Different speed signs, different cautionary signs. You know, our our goal was to try to create more visibility and more awareness about the speeds that people should be traveling, even though the speed limit's thirty five miles an hour. Make people aware of the hazards that exist, the curves, the swans, the kids, pedestrians um in an in a in an event or in in an attempt to try to slow them down. You know, my question is, would you be willing to wait until the speed study so that we would know the, you know, if if we're gonna lower the speed limit, we could go ahead and put the signs up right away. We wouldn't have to wait really for the ordinance, we, you know, with the weather, ground freezing. If we know what it's gonna be, we could put the signs up. Couldn't enforce them until the ordinance was passed, but we could certainly put the signs up. I think. Would that be all right, Jack?
Yes.
Yeah.
How long will the engineering study take?
I I'll know when I I'd have to ask him that. The study itself would be relatively quick. And and one of the advantages is we collect the speed data form, and he already has some of that data, and we're already in the process of collecting it. So I think I'll have more than enough data to to just come out, take a ride by and basically could could be could be a week or two weeks, three weeks. I don't think it'd be any more than that if he doesn't need any more speed data.
Okay, yeah.
Washington Corner one is gonna take a little longer.
Yeah, I was just wondering how long they'd be without the signs if they went.
Well, you know, like like I said, there are signs there. Um, there are, there are signs there that are cautionary and warning signs to 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 warn people to slow, you know, to slow them down. I I don't know. It depends on how long the speed study takes.
Chief Valentine, this is Vincenza. Just to clarify, the signs that you're referring to that you would additionally put up, are they, what exactly are they? Are they electronic? Are they just more?
No, it's more, it's different signs. So some of the ones that are there would probably come down. Some newer, more effective signs would probably go up. You know, like you might, I think you have a small children playing sign, you know, we would, we would replace that with a bigger sign. Probably put a new, a new bus, there's a bus stop sign there. So the school district did have a bus stop there at one point that they decided to take away from you.
I I believe it's still currently there at the Eastman of Lloyd Road and Lloyd Road.
The sign?
No, uh, no, the bus stop. I I don't recall seeing a sign.
Oh, so you so you think there is a sign there, a bus stop there? Someone said they walked. Okay, I thought there was a bus stop there. Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, it would, the the signs would be narrowed, they'd increase some, they're they're more modern, there's some visibility, there's the bigger placard, warning people of pedestrians, not just kids. You know, there's strips that we can put on existing signposts that say, you know, slow down. If you've ever seen those strips that go underneath the sign on the post, kind of reminding people, slow down, slow down, um, those types of things, you know. You know, John McDowell's been uh not not here for the last two weeks, but once he gets back, you know, one of our first things was gonna be to take a ride up there together. We're both very familiar with the street and what's already there. But, you know, if we can get, I think the key is is to get the traffic engineer in here as soon as possible and see what kind of timeframe we're looking at, and maybe then make that decision about what to do with the signs.
I I'd be in favor of that approach. I I think there is very good signage already on Lloyd Road.
Gotta love the swan signs. You seen any turtles?
Uh, there are turtles down at the bigger ponds, very big snapping turtles.
We don't have any turtle signs yet.
No, not yet. They're coming.
Chris, can we just clarify the bus stop thing? Because you did say you were within a mile of the school. The school will only provide bussing if you pay for it. So what's that bus stop then? Is that people that are paying?
Well, I I know that's where the paid bus stops.
Okay, that's where the paid bus goes. Okay.
Yeah. So I I don't know if that is differentiated from a non-paid bus.
Okay.
Even though we all pay for the buses.
We we pay, but they don't pick up. That's the problem. So.
There was a bus stop there before they started to pay bussing. The bus stop has been there for years and years and years and years.
So who's gonna relay the message to the Board of Ed that we want, you know, we need them to reconsider this policy?
Jack, isn't there supposed to be a school transportation safety committee? You know, typically, the police department and the school board have these conversations. But I believe there's supposed to be some type of a of a designated group who 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 determine um the need for safety bussing.
I I'm not familiar. I stopped my head, but let me look as you're speaking.
I'm going away, but we haven't had a committee for years and years and years. I know it's something, you know, I know we used to have a committee with the with the Board of Education when it was only Bernardsville.
Yeah, I think that was luckily created, though. Let me double check.
Do we have, Chief, while he's looking that up, do we have crossing guards there?
No.
Because we pay for, we pay for crossing guards throughout the town. If we have got walkers in that area, should we not have a crossing guard there?
No crossing guards.
Jeff, we can't even get crossing guards closer closer to school.
You don't, do you actually, um, Vincenza and Chris, are you paying for the buses or you driving your your children?
I I actually pay a um, I pay a nanny to drive my children.
Okay.
Yeah, my my wife subsidizes the family by driving the three children. But but to be perfectly fair, i- if we had a safe manner to to traverse that, to get to a, you know, one of the side streets like winding way and all, and had like then a bike path through like a designated area, um, my kid children would certainly be taking bikes or walking to school. There's no question about the health benefit and and everything else about that, the character building that does.
You know, the main, the main, the main problem that you have is Mendham Road, and that's that curve and the speed that the vehicles are traveling on Mendham Road. Um, and that'd be a considerable distance that the kids would have to um walk on that street. I I know they could go down winding right lane through, but you know, there's there's steep hills in the winter, the snow, the embed. It's not easy to get off Tower Mountain down to the Polo Grounds. I'm very, very familiar with that area. You know, and that's why um in the past, we've considered a sidewalk from uh Tower Mount, from Tower Mountain um down to Mendham Road and along Mendham Road up to connect to the Anderson Hill Road sidewalk. That's been discussed in the past, but it's never happened. Mendham Road is a county responsibility.
But I would think that the police department could tell the school board that you consider these roads too dangerous for courtesy bussing, um, walking, you know, for children to have the option to walk.
I I mean, frankly, Mary Jane, I I, so the chief did, I know for for our from for our cross Mendham Road, and I believe there now is a courtesy bus that drops off the kids that live on his street. Um, is my my kids don't utilize it, but I think the chief was was the one that advocated for for that. So.
Yeah, I think if you uh, you know, say there's no way children can walk on Lloyd Road, that's not courtesy bussing, you know, that should be, you know, those kids should get a ride.
No, I agree. And and you're not just talking about one bus stop. You're talking about a bus that drives down Lloyd Road and stops closer to the vicinity of the children, the kids' homes. Absolutely. Um, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. And unfortunately, that's where you need to go get the Board of Education's attention more than the borough's attention, I think. Um, we certainly support that effort, I think.
Chief, the section you're referring to is pretty big. It just says, the school district shall work in conjunction, in conjunction with municipal officials determining the criteria necessary for the designation of a hazardous route. It doesn't really require a committee, it just, you know, it could be with your department or whatever.
In the past, it's always been just a lot of back and forth and a lot of banner and a lot of insisting. You know, that they put bus stops where we think they're needed. And um, you know, in the past, we've been somewhat successful with that, not always successful.
Yeah, like I said, the statute's pretty big.
Yeah.
Okay.
One other public safety, just a quick announcement if I can. So um, one of the other issues related to traffic safety that came up that we discussed had to do with Prospect. And uh, there's a a a a problem on Prospect with a a blind, essentially a blind turn. Uh, and um, the recommendation um is that we amend the uh no parking ordinance so that we include the uh northern part of Prospect from Mount Airy to uh twenty five feet past that uh blind turn uh curve at line um at the on it. And so we're gonna propose, I I just want to make the announcement now because the draft will be formally introduced on September twenty eight. We've sent the language to to Mr. Pigeon to uh to uh add that to our no parking ordinance.
Yeah, that's an awful street when they park, you can't see at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, um, thank you, um, Chris and Vincenza for hanging in there with us and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
The input was very helpful.
Yeah. Much, everyone. Really appreciate your time tonight, as always.
Yeah, appreciated.
We'll be in contact with you.
Great, thank you.
And look down the road, not just out the window, because the police are there.
Just tell me where they are because I do drive up and down during the day.
Tell you that. We're trying to surprise you.
Supposed to be hiding.
It's not, I'm gonna tell anyone. I just want to know so I can find you.
We want you to slow down, too.
I do.
Your staff has been terrific, tremendous, Chief Valentine.
Okay, have a nice night. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next is, oh, mayor's update. Okay, um. I actually, I spoke uh in August with Walter Lane from the County Planning Department, um, asking him about different grants that might be available to us, particularly, we were talking about um the walkway from Boylan to the train station, from Boylan Terrace. Um, his suggestion was that we apply for transit village status, which was talked about a while ago, but we never went anywhere with it. So um, he is going to set up uh an initial meeting with the transit village people and our engineers to just talk about whether we would qualify or not, um, which I think we will based on adding the um the Quimby Lane project, because if they like to see redevelopment happening by the train station in order to give you that designation. The nice thing about having transit village designation is it gives you extra points on other grants. Um, and the other grant that he suggested was a transportation set aside program funds. And they do give you points for being a transit village and also for having a um what is that, safe streets? No, the uh, what was the policy we have? What do you call that? The one that we just, we did at last, um, forget if you get the extra points, um.
Complete street.
Complete streets, which we have, so we would get points for that. Um, this is, I spoke to Doug Walker, and he and I are gonna work on this grant because it can be anywhere from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars. Um, it's federal funds. It comes from the federal um fuel tax. The total pool is uh close to ten million. It um it's really, you know, you don't have to have a matching. Um, it really, we would pay for it and then get reimbursed from um the feds. And anything, if it enhances safety and adds to connectivity, that's what they're looking for, which is exactly what that boiling path would do. So Doug and I are gonna explore that and Bob Brightley and see if we can um get an application. And it's due the uh February um November twenty fourth, so we have some time to try and put that together. I figured, you know, it doesn't cost us anything except Bob Brightley's time, which we don't need much of because they actually, if once your application is accepted, they will assign you a designer to work with you. So you don't have to have a full engineering plan done, just a concept. Um, so uh, we'll be working on that. I'll keep you up to date on that. Uh, August twenty third, I went to the ice cream social at the pool and uh Bob Markowitz, who was elbow deep in the ice cream, doing a great job scooping it out. I went to the uh overdose awareness day of community on in crisis on August thirty first, which was a really lovely ceremony. If you've had the time to walk past there and seeing the the posters they have up, it's really very moving of the the young people who have over died of overdose. It really is uh heartbreaking. The other thing we did, which we started in our cultural arts committee, but um this kind of came from um the league. The New Jersey Motion Picture and Television Commission reached out to see if towns are interested in being in their database. So when a film company, now that New Jersey is allowing film companies, is looking for a particular train station, church, building, restaurant, hotel, um, they will go through this database of photographs and see whether or not they want to film in your town. And the nice thing about that is if they do film in your town, their crews need to eat, they need to shop, they need you know, other services, they may use your print shop. So it really is is good for the local economy. And uh, so we signed up to be in their database and Ed English volunteered to um supply them with pictures to upload. Because he has a whole library of pictures of our town and different buildings. So I thought that was kind of exciting to, maybe we'll have a movie here, who knows? Um, and then uh, actually, Jeff Hammond and I were at the Somerset County Governing Officials Association meeting this last week. Uh, Dr. Reddy gave us an update on COVID and then Steve Peter, who is the county clerk. um, talked about the election, the mail-in ballots. He has put in um, a lot of extra security. He did mention our problem here in Bernardsville that we had with the uh, wrong ballots getting distributed for the primary. And he's assured us that they are going to, I don't know how they're going to do this, but he said after they come from the printer, they are going to look at every single ballot and make sure it's correct. When it goes in the envelope, I don't know how they're going to do that. That would be exhausting, but um, and he's got some extra security put in place that he wouldn't tell us what it was, because it's a secret. So he's assuring us that this um, mail-in ballot will go smoothly. Um, and Anthony, I guess you know we're getting, uh, what's the date that they're dropping off our box?
Uh, county's going to get the box, yeah, between tomorrow and next Monday. And then they're, once they get it, they'll let us know when we're going to get it. So I assume we're probably going to get it sometime, maybe like the next to last or, or last few days of, of, of uh, September, like the twenty-second to the, the thirtieth.
Okay.
The next last week, yeah.
So is it official that we are going to get one of the, that we, our application was accepted?
We are, yes.
Yeah, so that'll be very convenient. I'm glad, you know, we, we did that. Um, and for those that were, were, I don't know if anybody was, but they, the Governing Officials Association was doing, supposed to do a dinner in March to honor all the people who's, who had completed their terms, which was um, Chris Schmidt, it was Diane Greenfield from our town, um. And they were, for each town, needless to say, it got canceled because it was for March. They've rescheduled it to January thirteenth, uh, twenty-one at the Bridgewater Marriott. And they'll include two years' worth of people. So it's a nice event. If anybody's interested, we'll get you information on that.
Can I, can I just make a quick announcement? But Dr. Ready did mention that this, that the state and the county are in the process of uh, formulating plans uh, for distribution of vaccines, uh, once one becomes available. Right now, there is no real plan. We did discuss this in our public safety committee and we're actually ahead of the game because we actually have a plan from uh, some, I think, six or seven years ago about uh, medication distribution, so we could adopt that. Uh, if in fact, uh, the, the implication that Dr. Ready gave is that they may default some of this to the individual municipalities, which I was surprised to hear, but uh, more on that, I guess, as it beca, as it develops, but that was a topic that she did raise.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, correspondence. We had a very nice thank you from um, Ed Suzuki for the swim team. Um, which he said was a great season. I think the kids really enjoyed it. Um, the other was a request to use the library parking lot. What was that one for? Look at that.
That, that was for uh, Madeline English.
Uh. Oh, for the party. That's right. Yeah, so if you have an RSVP, please do. Um, that's not this Sunday, not this week, next.
I, I think it is. Yeah, I think it's, it's Saturday with the rain date of Sunday, I believe. Well, let, let me check on that, but I think that's. Yeah, Saturday from not, from one to four.
Here it is.
And the rain date, I believe, is, is uh, Sunday from one to four. Yeah, the, the, this weekend.
Yep, so uh, if you plan on going, please RSVP, because I know they want to make sure they don't over have too many people there, even though you're outside. Um, okay, do we have, oh, you know, I did have one other, I had a letter from um, uh, Eileen Grippo from the Friends of Historic Bernardsville. And they're looking to do, I think, around the holidays, um, a, what do you call them, luminaries, you know, to light up all the historic buildings around town. Um, so she will be probably giving us some kind of proposal at some point. They were talking about real candles and I know Glenn's here, Glenn's, Glenn will freak out over that. Uh, I said, can't you use the battery ones? We don't want, you know, real candles, the wind blows. No, none of. But um, I think it would look really pretty if they do it, but I think the battery ones may be a better idea, so we'll get more information on that. Um, that was the other thing I had. So did we have any unfinished business? Um, I think we covered everything, right? Any new business?
Um, I wanted to bring back up the Comcast um, and, you know, opening up to other cable providers.
It, cable TV is different from the other utilities in that they get a non-exclusive franchise to operate in the borough. Uh, the only thing the, the borough does is consent to an application. In fact, we've consented to several over the years of competitors that have just never followed through. But there's no way we can really force uh, another carrier to come into the borough. If they want to, as I say, they apply and the council gives municipal consent uh, to their application, but the ultimate decision is, is up to the BPU. But the important thing is it's not exclusive, so, you know, more carriers are welcome to come into the borough. They don't have to worry about the fact that Comcast is over here.
Right, okay, yeah.
I think it's an economic decision because of the infrastructure.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was going to say, because we have like FiOS, but then it only goes up to like, I don't know, a street. But then the next, the, the next street over, then it's not done. So it's done by um, by each company.
That, that's correct.
Got it.
I think the problem is they need a certain density to make it, you know, economically viable.
Right, yep, makes sense. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had one item and um, I don't know if, we got an email about the Somerset County roadway safety study. And that's something where residents can go. It's on the county website.
Oh, you just put it down on the bubble, didn't you?
Yeah, they can put like um, a marker. You know, they put their name and their email and everything and then they mark where they think uh, a sidewalk should be, where a crosswalk should be, where the crosswalk is needs to be improved or lighted better, where a bike lane should be and stuff like that. So I know we've been surveyed before, but this just seems like a very good interactive uh, map that people can really look at. You can see where someone else puts something and then add your comment to their um, entry and stuff like that. So it's on the county, um, and the county website, and I also posted it to the bubble, but maybe, I don't know if we can put the link on the borough website or the borough Facebook page. If you guys would be okay with that.
Yeah, I think if it's county business, I don't see why we, and it affects our town.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I'm promoting the REC Master Plan Survey, the one that's in the mail. Um, for some residents, it went physical mail and to mail back, but also there's the online one as well.
Yeah, I think he, last I talked to him, they had four hundred and fifty-some responses to the online one, which was pretty good. But I think people may need to be reminded.
Yeah, I think we need to promote it.
The one that was mailed, the same as the one online?
No, one that was mailed is, is an official survey done by a survey company and it's, it's uh, longer, more intense than the online one. The online one's more like for fun. But this one is, will be um, a, a serious.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had the pleasure of being one of these selected houses for the long one. Um, it, it did take a little time. Um, and so I honestly, I mean, I had it on my desk and it looked daunting and I did not want to touch it for at least a week or so. And then I finally got to uh, to doing it and putting it in the mail today. So um, I think just some encouragement uh, to complete those would be uh, needed.
Yep, thanks for reminding us on that. Good. Um, okay, can we go into closed session? Or somebody want to move?
I'll move to.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you, members of the public who have been here. You can now go to bed. We can.